This is the most.
Check, check.
It's off.
Check. Awesome.
What do you think about last Miles being?
Oh my gosh.
That's a hard one there for was it five, six years ago when he was at LSU and.
Oh, it was longer than that, wasn't it?
Longer than that.
Because I think, well, I think it was 2013.
Yeah.
Because they said. I mean, he hadn't been coaching for a while. Anyway.
No, he sat out for a few years.
Oh, gosh.
Tell you what, that kind of mind stuff is something to measure on here.
I tell you what. Come on. And, oh, I, well, I think I know who was on the phone, or maybe I kept my head caught in my dentist. I've been to her place today, but this guy that's on ESPN said, well, no loss. He said, he's not a coach. He said, he's just a clown or something. Anyway.
I don't know. It's kind of looking like a dessert first kind of night.
When did you get back?
The 23rd.
Oh, okay. I guess I just saw your pictures.
Well, I'm smart enough when I leave that 20-year-old daughter at home alone.
Oh, yeah.
I don't post out of town pictures until we have returned home. This is what I did, not what I'm doing kind of stuff.
Smart.
Yep. So.
Is Marie okay after her fall in the kitchen?
Yeah, I talked to her on Saturday and she said she was. Said she would feel better.
I didn't understand what she's, they said something fell in a drain or a pot.
She didn't, I couldn't really.
And she fell trying to get it out. I couldn't. I couldn't figure it out.
Sounded like she hit her kid.
Ooh. Oh, wow.
She didn't have bad luck. She had no luck at all.
What?
We really need to tell her if she gives us this much food, we need more napkin than this.
Paper towels up there.
It's just disproportionate.
I know.
Not, not when you're as classy and graceful as I am.
We were just talking about the, the size of the napkin.
I, I can make, barely make it through the salad with just.
Criticizing some 10-year-old boy's slave job.
Really need to get Horace Good to schedule better tonight's band concert.
Oh.
So Deidra's got her concert tonight. I'm like. Honey, I don't think we're gonna be done by seven.
So I'm gonna have to miss it.
These are our motions that we will have to make.
Okay.
We'll queue you in when it's.
When it's time for me to read them?
Yeah.
Oh, thanks, Marilyn. I need all the help I can get.
Oh, I do too. Believe me.
And today I went to dentist. I thought I was getting my permanent cap in because I went yesterday to get it cleaned. And I said to this girl, she's new. Boy, was she, she's the roughest cleaning I've ever had. I mean. But anyway, I told her, I said, this one is just a temporary test. And I said, he told me not to floss around it. So I said, you might want to be careful.
Hey, Leonard.
Two hours later, I'm sitting at the church. I'm answering the phone. The damn thing falls off.
Oh, no.
I crowned off. Oh, yeah, temperate. Oh, thank you.
I tried to call out as best I could.
Oh, you're, you're a winner. That's pretty indelible. Anyway. Anyway. So when I was in here, he said, no, man. He said, we're, and I almost threw the thing away because I thought we were putting this over. He said, no, I just did the wood cut out last week. So, so no, a month ago to make sure it's okay. So he said, we're gonna put that one back on. I'll get it ready for it. And as he was doing it, this thing that he's in there grinding and she's got the water, I mean, it blows up. And it's like, I said, I mean, it's like, I said, what's that? He said, well, we put that in so that the, so that the temporary would fill. We put a cotton in there. Well, when the tooth fell out, the cotton didn't fall out. Well, I didn't realize, I mean, it scared the day like that. I didn't realize it also cracked out of my tongue. Back there for a minute. You may have to do my report.
You missed a very important conversation, Blake.
What did we miss?
Marie can't give us this much food and this much napkin. It is very disproportionate.
They're like, we need a cloth napkin. Good as the food is.
There are some good news on the radio there for you.
I know. Austin City Limits is a go so far. That's what they said. I don't know what they're gonna, how they're gonna enforce, but it's their 20-year anniversary too. So they said they're gonna make up for last year.
Oh, wow.
So the nice news is, is all the artists had all this time to work on new music. So I feel like we've got some possibilities.
I didn't know Bob Spurling had ever been on the board.
He was on this one?
Yeah. Must've been someone. Oh, I'll bet he was on the, on the BAA or. Because it says Bob also enjoyed serving on the board of trustees.
I think he was on Endowment. I thought he was on Endowment.
He intended to run for trustees. That was about the time he got sick.
Yeah, I'm hoping, uh. I've got my eye out on a few artists that I'm hoping that will make the commitment to their. Last year, they canceled Coachella in California and they moved it to the same week as ACL. And so they had like Red Hot Chili Peppers and that were committed to Coachella and then they couldn't. So then they couldn't commit to ACL since they'd switched it. And of course, then it all got canceled. So, but there's, like I said, I'm hoping. The good news is, is I think we're gonna upgrade to VIP tickets because we've already paid for our regular tickets. Yeah, well, we were, and we just held it over. We just said, keep the, keep the money for the tickets. And so if we spend the same, I mean, it's, it's like, I think it's another, I think tickets are like $300 and I think VIP tickets are $800. So, and then there's platinum ones that are like on behind stage that are like 3,000, but we're not paying those prices. But, uh, but you know, like I said, for just to upgrade and then it's, it's definitely better seat door, better area viewing and kind of a private bathrooms, which is kind of a big thing when it comes to like those festivals. So.
Well, country stampede.
Yeah.
We would never go without taking my motorhome.
Right.
It's.
Because I am not sharing those porta potties.
I mean, they, they do have a lot of porta potties around there, but it is, and for the guys, it's okay, but for the women, I.
Back to the motorhome. That's it.
Are they having that this year? I haven't heard.
There, there are advertisements for it.
Moved it to Topeka though.
Yeah, and I went the, the year it accidentally ended up in Topeka because of flooding in Manhattan.
The flooding, but I felt like that was their excuse to get out of Manhattan.
Well.
Which is kind of a shame.
It really shouldn't have been because where they had to have it there at Topeka Heartland is not their permanent plan for it. So it was awful and it rained and we slid around in the mud and, I mean, don't get me wrong, it was still fun, but it was not the park-like camping.
Yeah.
With grass and trees.
By total free.
You had there. So they supposedly the more permanent location at Heartland is supposed to be much more accommodating. I'll let somebody else be to get. And very few, but we, we run on our own power and so we don't worry about it. Like, like I said, I'm pretty spoiled. That's the first time we went, last time I went, the only way I'll go.
It'll be curious though, if they do, you know, that usually brings in about 300 to 400,000 people for the festival on a weekend. So even though you're spread out, I was still curious how they're going to manage.
Yeah.
Somewhat of a, I mean, I know that's, it's in October, but I mean.
When it, what is, where is it?
It's down at Zeiger Park in Austin. It's a big, like three-day festival of like hundreds of bands.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's good to see things starting to open back.
Well, yeah, Texas has opened up everything.
But they did. They announced it that they were. But we were in Dallas and they, they're still holding masks because of the cities and counties can still.
Yeah.
Kind of over, overrule the governor.
You're welcome.
Busy day, Marilyn?
Um.
Hello, hello.
No kidding. This is actually my day off.
Oh.
So I've been.
You've seen it before.
I've been working.
Working.
Trying to understand it.
How you doing, Leonard?
Yeah.
It is good news.
Just enough to be dangerous. That's, that's bad.
It's a lot to tour. Will we open some of these windows?
Yep, I'll do it.
Tillington just got hooked up today.
Isn't it supposed to snow this weekend?
Yeah, I was just listening to the weather.
We can get like a foot. They said, they were, I think they backed off a little bit, but. Pike's Peak set up to 52 inches.
I know. I was reading our, because our cabin's just on the backside of Pike's Peak and they're, they're saying we could have up to five foot of snow up there.
Yep.
That's crazy.
So I'm thinking I better hurry and get up there Thursday so I can just, you know, snowed in. We're not gonna be back for a while, guys, but.
Cell phones not working.
Our cell phones don't work up there. Now, we do have internet up there, so technically I can turn on my wifi calling, but I don't, I don't announce. We used to keep a landline up there, but it got hit by lightning and they could only come fix it during the week. I'm like, you know what, then just turn it off for now because we get here late on Fridays and leave on Sundays. So can't even schedule the next time I'll be here on a weekday for you to do that.
How long does it take to get there from here?
About four and a half. Just, yeah. If traffic's bad going up the mountain, it could be a little longer, but.
I just think that would be ideal to kind of place you up there to retreat to.
Like I said, without any cell, I mean, even internet, I could go without internet. I mean, just to disconnect.
But sometimes when me and Skeeter need to work on business things, not necessarily the car that's coming in or the, just big picture balance, it's good for us to be able to go up there and get rid of all of the other headaches. I'm not going, okay, let me start a little laundry and a little bit dishwasher. I'll be right back. You know, it just. It's just, we can actually concentrate on something.
Right.
We really love it up there. Well, anytime you want to go up there, Marilyn, you just let us know. We would rather have people we know and trust go up and use it than it sit there empty and be worrying about.
Well, we have a family cabin up in Montana and of course I get there once every couple of years.
Yeah, that's. That's a little longer, John.
Yeah, that's a big time. And there's no air conditioning and I don't like it.
Well, that's four and a half. We really couldn't get any closer without, you know, being in Colorado Springs or wanting further out there. So it works really well for us. And then when we want to go skiing, it's only about an hour and a half down to Breckenridge and.
Nice.
And I'll tell you what, as much as they charge for some of those rooms in Breckenridge during peak times, I don't have to drive ain't so bad.
Right. See, Skeeter's driving.
Well, that can be a nightmare of its own. He tends to not allocate for the conditions quite the same way I do. Drive through South Park from our cabin down to Burlington where South Park cartoon actually, yeah.
There's a place.
Yes, yes. The writers are actually from, so yeah, the kids always thought that was pretty fun.
I had no idea.
Be a short night. Be a short night? Sarcasm, by the way.
I went to my computer and it's very warm. And looked at it and says, oh, that's the battery. It's bulging. But it doesn't always do it. But it, but it's always done it at some point. So it's so nice that I let the kids run in and out. Feet comes in, dead grass all over and
Just rolling around.
Yeah. It's like if you walked in my house right now, it looks like we are.
Does.
It did.
Call Derek and ask him why I'm not on the chiller stuff already.
No, I didn't call him tonight, Derek.
It's warm.
So any cheese fans here? Yeah. So yesterday at, um, my husband's work, he works up the Delafire Distribution Center. He runs the city operations. So Frank Clark came in to pick up his new, um, Michael Jordan wheels for his car. They couldn't deliver him, but he, nobody was ever home. And so so he calls and the bill of lading or whatever said to Frankie Clark. And the person who was handling it doesn't, you know, didn't know who Frankie Clark was. So he calls and sees, just see if he can pick him up. And so they arranged that. He said, I really need to come today because I'm heading someplace and then I'll be back and start spring training. And his spouse says, spring training? He said, yeah, I play for the Chiefs. Oh, so he comes, so they, you know, it's like, so he comes to the distribution center and all the ladies or whatever, Google and all of, you know, whatever. And he said, now I like to take pictures. And you can take all the pictures you want, but you just can't post them because we get in trouble. So my husband thanked him and gave him the fist bump and just like, well, I just don't know what a day transportation will bring. What position does he play? Right? Yeah. Michael Jordan. Wheels, right? I know. Well, obviously, you don't shop very. I don't have that hard. Somebody might just borrow them. That you're Captain America?
Captain America.
Love it. Love it, love it. That's right.
Are you learning your rodeo terms? At a girl.
Well, I learned it too. It's true. Like when you, they have the host of rodeo. That's an event.
Okay. I didn't know somebody.
Right. I don't.
No. Okay. I just curious.
Heard him enough.
That way you're not committed.
Right. So there, there is a limit where your team stands. Your team.
They're bred to buck.
Do you need this one back? I got one at home.
I can take it.
Okay.
Do you have one of these plates?
Yep, I think so. I thought so.
One here and one here. So I wanted to make sure I wasn't knowing anything from your side of the file.
I just read this like 3,965 and then 4,160.
No.
Oh, one of.
Yeah, we'll cross one out.
Oh, gotcha.
We'll vote on it.
Okay. I'm not too swift today.
No, you're fine. I, I haven't.
I went to the dentist thinking I was going to get my crown. And he wasn't.
You didn't get your crown?
No. And he hasn't, I've been to the dentist so many times lately, but yesterday they went for a cleaning and there's a new gal. Oh, I missed my, my lady. She moved it to Oklahoma. This gal was the roughest I've ever had. I mean, I said, uh, that's a temporary cap back there. You might want to turn, watch it and tell where. And next thing I, well, so it didn't happen then. But I said, the second Monday, I go to the church and babysit the phone while they have their staff meeting. And I should stay there humming away, not really humming, but all of a sudden I bit down. I need chew on this doobie. I almost threw it away because I thought, I thought, well, I'm gonna get my permanent one today. Well, anyway, I already told some of this, but in, when they put the temporary cap, they put a piece of cotton in there. And when the cap fell off, the cotton didn't fall off. And he had this buzzard drilling thing in there. And when it hit that cotton, it just went crazy. And I didn't know until the deadening came out and I couldn't go, I've got slice on this side of my tongue back there. Anyway, we're getting the permanent cap on in two weeks, maybe. I'll go see Dr. Jackson in the morning and give him the afternoon. Might have to take a side job to get a new job to pay for my dental bill. Because Marilyn, I read up there twinging, oh, are we doing two? Do you think this would be safer if I just slid it under their door? The endowment?
I want to say it's the ocean.
Okay.
Yeah. It might be, but. Such a pretty color.
I really, really had to test one of my employees with these pants. I bought them in Amarillo to swear that it's going out of business along with a bunch of other stuff. Get it home and still have the ink tag on it.
Oh, no, that's so frustrating.
I took it back there. My god, me and him got the grinder out and the needle nose pliers and and you got it. We got it accomplished. I YouTube'd it before we did it and I said, okay, don't, don't take me teaching you these skills means I'm going to go bail you out of jail if you decide to shop. But this is not these for the purposes done.
That's funny.
I wouldn't think to YouTube. So good job. Yeah. Yeah, I knew this word. Yeah. I, I knew that's where I wanted him to grind it and just what I wanted him to check out with the needle nose plier. We had a great team. I don't think I've been quite coordinated with the grinders. So I was glad I had his assist on that part.
Okay, guys, I have six o'clock. Is, is Mark ready? Andrew, everybody's. You're all okay? All right, I'm going ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the March meeting of the Garden City Community College Board of Trustees. Hey, thank you. And we'll go ahead and do a roll call for announcing who's here. Beth.
Beth Tedrow, present.
They go, you're. Leonard has a, Leonard Pitts, present.
Blake Wassinger, present.
Shanna Smith, present.
Marilyn Douglas, present. I'll let you guys introduce yourselves.
Ryan Rudin, present.
Carl Armstrong, present.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, we do have a lengthy agenda tonight, so I would just say get comfortable and we'll push through this here. First of all, I have a few comments. The Brunkbusters produced two All-Americans, Miss Lou Personal Bests at the 2021 NJCAA Indoor Track National Championship that was held at Pittsburgh State University. Libanair Williams and Deondre Wilborn earned All-American status in the heptathlon and 60 meter hurdles respectively. The men's team finished 22nd and the women came in 24th. And we're very proud of those guys. I can't imagine doing a heptathlon.
10 events.
Oh, wow. Yeah. We honored two Phi Beta Kappa students this past week. Deborah Medina Escalera and Lauren Jones at the annual All-American Academy Team Virtual Ceremony on March 3rd. Both students received a medal and a certificate of scholarship during the ceremony. Deborah is a nursing major planning to attend four As. And Lauren is Communication Science and Disorders. And I think she's going to K-State. We were honored and privileged to be a part of this celebration for these two ladies. And of course, we want to congratulate them and the Phi Theta Kappa organization. Just a reminder, the campus has spring break next week, March 15 through the 19. The campus will be closed Thursday, March 18 and Friday, March 19. We held a retreat. The board had a retreat and it was guided by ACCT Liaison, Pam Fisher. I just wanted to extend my appreciation to everybody for attending and participating on a Saturday. In the past month, two, Beth and I have had two meetings with President Rudin. The first was to talk about follow-up after the retreat. And the second meeting was to prepare the agenda for this meeting. And I've had one meeting with Colleen Allen, ACCT. And that was to discuss the upcoming board assessment. So that's all the announcements that I have today. We do not have any new employees to introduce. So it looks like we're gonna jump into our, um, agenda item number two, the consent agenda.
Like to discuss item A. Approval of meeting 3921.
Oh, can I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda? I would like to pull item D and E.
I'll make a motion to approve B and C of the consent agenda. We're meeting A, D and E for the discussion.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda items B, C. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. It sounds like.
Aye.
Go ahead.
David. Leonard, aye.
Blake, aye.
Shanna, aye.
And Marilyn, aye. All right, let's go back to item D.
I distinctly remember during that meeting, we had a motion made. Pursued looking a little more at option two. The motion was seconded. There was never any discussion. The motion was never voted on. According to Robert's Rules of Order, you have discussion, you vote. I don't know why it was not continued and why it wasn't voted on.
Because Blake withdrew it.
You can't withdraw it after it's been made.
Okay, but, but we. But we do need then, and we're going to talk about some help with Robert's Rules a little bit later.
Yeah. It's not a satisfactory answer.
Well, I don't know. I don't know how we can go back now. If, if you have an answer for that.
I don't know the proper redress.
Yeah, and I would entertain your guys' opinions. We understood that the motion was.
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn.
You understand that it's withdrawn, but how do you withdraw motion that you made and the second?
Because the person that originally made it.
Have that authority.
Can we?
Let's go on.
Can we review Robert's Rules to assess that?
Wow, so I don't know, it's been, been a long time since I've been really sharp on Robert's Rules. But I'm wondering if possibly, and I, I remember thinking about it that night, is once Blake withdrew his motion. We should have asked Leonard if he withdrew his.
The motion may not be withdrawn without the consent of the second is quick Google search. So nobody shoot messenger if the message that I found is incorrect. But that's, and.
I got.
When the mover modifies, the second may withdraw.
Yeah, and I got permission from the assembly, meaning the group is required to withdraw or to modify it.
Person may not withdraw a motion unilaterally, may do so only with the consent of the meeting.
Don't mind when you fix it. Well, and in the future, when motion's made and the second, then you have discussion and then it's brought to vote and up or down vote. Let's expand, that did not happen and it should have.
Yeah.
My opinion would have had a good chance of passing, but we don't know that.
It's probably a fair statement that we just make a, make a note of it and improve on it for the time. I would, I would agree. I mean, you, your logic sounds right. I mean, it shouldn't have been just withdrawn without any kind of, because we already had motions.
It sounds like for it to be withdrawn, either both the originator and the second motion both have to withdraw and it has to be, you know, a vote to approve the withdrawal. And, and that was not formalized in that setting.
Okay. I would say, you know, we had the motion and decision ahead of that motion that we were.
Pursue that, I kind of.
No, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. But I agree, it was, it was awkward and clunky and I probably didn't handle it correctly. From now on, I hope that we can use, and that's like Beth mentioned, we are going to talk about a conduct policy that's including someone monitoring Robert's Rules so that we don't.
Maybe it's to run into these snagged. Unusual scenarios that we don't run into every day, we have a reference to go to.
I mean, I would say that the discussion should have happened. I should have, I mean, the discussion ended with the motion of the first one and then I brought on more discussions. So that right there probably was out of line to Robert's Rules. So.
All right, so in this circumstance, because what we are talking about today is in relation to Leonard's concern. Does anybody feel that we need to address that again?
I think we just, it's out on the table, it was wrong. We noted that was wrong. Let's just put it behind us and let's just go on from here.
Good.
Sounds good.
Lesson and Robert's Rules for all of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Item A. Let's look at the. Yeah.
There'd be some way that Jody could amend this to say that it was discussed. And the board agreed that it was an error and to go on from that point on, something to that effect as part of the minutes for the September or February 9 meeting. And it could be something in minutes. That shows we recognized we had a mistake.
Yeah.
We had discussed it, we corrected it and we moved on from that, something to that effect.
Yeah, I think we can add a paragraph in there and Jody can look at it and, and we'll edit it and bring it to the next board meeting. So we will postpone item A to next meeting. You guys will see that.
Do you want?
We want a motion to postpone?
Yeah, do you want to do it right away?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to postpone the vote on item A until amendments are added for next month's meeting.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second to postpone item A to the next meeting when we can see the corrections to the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? All right, Deb.
Aye.
David, aye. Leonard, aye.
Blake, aye.
Shanna, aye.
Marilyn, aye, thank you. All right, item D and E. Let's see, D starts on page 32.
So item B will have John Moss for ransom financial. I'm doing this as well. Item D is in reference to conversation we had last month there regarding financing of current debt service. So we, partly had conversations with John, John Grant, numbers, ninth there. Both, instead of Wagner, as well as the revenue bonds under students. So he's wanting to present those and then we can get into especially on the resolution there.
Actually, it's the study. Hey, John.
Good evening, how's everyone?
How are you?
Hey, John, nice to see you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I had a Zoom meeting last night and my Zoom froze up. So you guys keep talking and I'll re-enter if that happens again. So I'm not used to not being there and I miss seeing you all. We have two items for your consideration this evening. The first one is refinancing your 2017 COPs was, was for a housing project. And the other one is for your 2014 revenue bonds for a housing project. The other item is the consideration of multiple projects, yes?
I was saying, I was just going to let the board know that, so the packet that I passed out. You're going to start, just I go through the tables, right, John?
Repeat, please.
So you're just going to go through the tape, you're going to go through the tables as in order, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I.
We will.
Okay, and so the, just for a little help, because I get paper challenged when the numbers all look the same. So the blue papers are the Wagner apartments. The green is the revenue bond. And so those two items are the refinancing part. So then we'll stop and discuss that and then move forward or are you going to discuss it all, are you going to present it all, John?
It's however the board desires. We can break it up into two pieces. We can do it all at one time with both resolutions at the end, but there are two action items for the board's consideration.
Want to discuss refinance?
Yeah, let's keep them separate.
Okay, so let's keep them separate.
That'll be fine. So anyway, my, my sheets aren't color coded, so I'm going to refer to the table numbers. Table one is the outstanding debt service for the 2017 COPs. There's a million eight outstanding. You'll see on the table that the interest rate is a 3.08. Down at the bottom, you'll see that there's a redemption date of May 18th, 2021. That interest accrues from May 1st. So the principal amount would be a million eight, interest, crude interest to the 18th, or they'd be 2,618. And then when you did the project back in 17, you agreed to a 1% call premium if the COPs were ever paid off or redeemed early, excuse me. And so the total payoff amount is a million eight 20, 618 for the 2017 COPs. If, now I can't really see you all, so just speak up if you have any questions, okay?
For sure.
So table two is the estimated debt service on the refunding COPs for the 2014. You'll see on this table that the estimated interest rates are 0.45% out to 0.85%. Just ridiculously low. The principal amount, a million eight sixty. The dated and settlement date of the refinancing, May 4th, 2021. The net interest cost about 1%. You'll see that we also have interest, we have total lease payments. Carla, I don't believe that you're paying a trustee fee on this transaction at this time. So we, we, you know, full disclosure, this is an additional cost, so we want to include that in the numbers. So the total payments would be a million nine oh three, more or less. Now, table three is the savings page. Now, again, I want to remind you all that these are just estimates and we'll go through some more details when we go through the calendar. Total estimated payments on the refunding portion, a million nine oh three, eight fifty seven. Outstanding debt service, a million nine sixty six. Cash savings, 62,462. The present value of that savings, if you look all the way down to the bottom, 62,00916 or 3.5% of the debt refinance. Now, our rule of thumb is that if you can save 3% present value savings, you should take the refinancing into consideration. It's not our job to tell you to do it or not. It's, it's really your job to determine if, if this is sufficient savings to proceed with the refinancing. Because what you lose is the ability to call this debt if interest rates would happen to go lower. So that's really the only, only risk that you have in this. So any questions about the refinancing analysis for the 2014 COPs? Oh, excuse me, one more table, table four. Table four is the sources and uses of funds. Under the sources of funds, a million eight sixty of new COPs. Remember the payoff amount was a million eight twenty six eighteen. We estimate the underwriters discount to be 1%. Cost of issuance allocable to this issue, 1.07%. So balances at a million eight sixty. And I always tell the folks that I work with that my kids have been taught two things. One of them is it's net, not gross. The savings that is portrayed on this table, on the previous table, is net of expenses. Okay, so this would be one part of the refunding issue is refinance the 2014. It will do this in one issue, but I want, wanted to break it up so you could see what the benefit is for both issues being refunded under consideration. So any questions about the 2017 refunded COPs?
And we just, we discussed that the payoff date is the same. Yeah, so.
Total of that is a million eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Or a million nine hundred and three, eight fifty.
Yes, that's the estimated refund, refunding amount.
That's wrong.
For the second purchase of a Wagner apartment.
Is there a question directed towards me? I apologize.
In 17, that was the original issuance.
Not yet, just discussion.
That's the original issuance date.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, I think we're good to move into 2014.
Okay. Table five is enterprise system revenue bonds. I believe this was for housing also, it was issued in 2014. The interest rates, as you'll see on table five, currently range from three to three and an eighth over between 21 and 27th. The anticipated redemption date is June 1st, 21, which is its earliest redemption. Principal being refunded, the 3,120. Accrued interest would be the payment due on June 1st, 47,10625. For a total amount of 3,167,10625. If you turn to table six, it's the same interest rates as we showed on table two. The refunding amount is 2,870.
Hey, John, I think you muted. We're, I think you.
We lost you.
There you go.
Okay, am I back?
Yep.
Okay, so I apologize when my computer went black, it must have muted it. So table six, I'm not sure where you lost me. So table six is the estimated refunding debt service allocated to refinancing the 14th. Table seven with refunding debt servers, then that trustee payment, because you're not currently making a trustee payment on the revenue bonds. Total outstanding debt service, and I call this cash flow differential. Because when we refinance revenue bonds to a COP, you're allowed to use the reserve account to pay down the amount of the bonds being refunded. So you have a lower refunding bond issue size. So in fiscal '21, the class, cash flow differential would be 452,10625. Then '22, fiscal '22 would be 55,000. Fiscal twenty-two would be fifty-five thousand five thirteen, then thereafter, the payments would stay the same. The gross savings down at the bottom is five hundred and five thousand one forty-one until you take out the net of the bond reserve. So the net cash savings is a hundred and forty-eight thousand six ninety-three. The present value savings, one forty-eight seven ninety-four. And I didn't get the percentage on here, but it's four point seven seven percent PV. So both refunding the fourteens and the seventeens meet. Our minimum expectations of the savings requirement pro forma. Uh if you go to table eight. You'll see the sources and uses of funds. Which. Those balance with three million one sixty-seven to pay off the old debt, a one percent underwriters discount. And about a one point oh seven percent cost of issuance. Now, if you the calendar. If you decide to proceed, the action item tonight is a resolution to establish a sale date. For the refunding COPs. We're establishing April thirteenth. As the sale date for the COPs. Um that is when you are committing to proceeding with this refinancing or not. On that date, we will receive bids, we'll run numbers, we'll show you the savings. Things, and if the savings aren't sufficient enough to proceed, then we collapse the transaction. And you don't owe anything, anybody, any money. Um the new money issue, we're considering getting rated. This one's small enough and short enough that we feel that would. Sell good enough um. Without being rated, because if it was being rated, then. You would be you would incur a cost even if the bond issue. Collapsed. So again, on the thirteenth, we'd receive bids, we'd run numbers, we'd show you, make recommendation. Closing would be on May fourth. Redemption of the seventeen COPs on May eighteenth. Redemption of the revenue bonds. June one of twenty-one on. We initially started doing this as one. Transaction with the new money issue. Uh to save on some of the cost of issuance. And Kevin and I did reduce our fees on this one to accommodate. Uh and Kevin Cowans with Gilmore and Bellis Bond Council, I apologize. Uh we reduced our fees on this one. We'll take a full fee on the last one if if. That one gets done. If this one doesn't get done, the second issue will, none of the fees will change. So. We wanted to do this separately because um. Interest rates are. Going higher. There's pressure for their for an increase. Right, it's horrible. The US Treasury ten-year treasury is up a whole grand, one point six percent, but when can you consider? How low it was before, that that is quite an increase. So we wanted to segregate this out, do it alone, get it out of the way. Um it's a riskless transaction. For you all, if if rates jump. And you sign not to proceed, then then you don't owe anything, anybody. Any money on this. So that's why I recommended to staff that we break up the two transactions. With raising interest rates and rates getting higher. And making this a riskless transaction as opposed to owing a. A fee if we get it rated in combination with doing the money issue. So any questions that you may have about the numbers?
Clear as mud.
So all told, I mean, the the debt service pays out in the same timeframe as previous. Both of the debt services that are proposed to refinance, there would be total savings incurred of just over two hundred thousand. Look at this and discuss it, like this is. Practical. Mechanism for to to bring forward the board that's more consideration.
I I guess my own, I mean, they still get paid off on the same amount of time. We're saving two hundred thousand. And the idea of interest rates going lower. As the only risk, I mean. We don't change anything else. I don't I don't see. And again, it's not the. It's not the final draw, the standard line we we have. When they come back on the thirteenth of April. There's really no, I don't I don't see a reason why not to not pursue until that point. We can always cancel out there and it doesn't cost us any money. Is that hinging or the interest rates, John? Um I obviously you're gonna do a bid out, but I mean, is it as a? As a total on both of them? If we decide to just do one or the other, does that affect the interest rate dramatically?
Um. Not, it it would be interesting um on the sale day. Let's say that the numbers, we get the interest rates, and that's a great question, and that's. A lot of people say that, but it really is. It's a great, what happens if what looks like we should do one and not the other? Uh what the procedure would do is it would get the interest rates. I would run numbers separately, just. As we have here to show you what the net benefit is for each. Bond issue, and if it doesn't make sense to do one of them. What we would do is reject. The bid, the winning bid. And. In the mean, well, okay, let's we get the bids, excuse me, I'm bouncing around here a little bit. We'd receive the bids like ten o'clock on that morning. If both issues, if we. Could only recommend doing one issue other than the other, we would get a hold of Carla. And say, hmm, looks like the fourteen should be done, but the seventeens really don't make sense. So our so our recommendation to the board is to reject the bids that we have received. Eaved and ask them for the winning bidder a for a proposal just on. The fourteens, because that would be the one that would be more likely being done and not the seventeens. And that would be up to them to say, yeah, we'll do that or not do that. So then what would happen is we'd bring the bids. Um you could go ahead and accept the winning bid if you really wanted to. To refinance both of them, but in our pocket would be. A a proposal from the winning bidder with the same terms and conditions for just the two thousand and fourteen. And you would have the option to do either one of those that night. And I hope I explained that okay.
Right. Basically, yeah. Yep.
So so would it affect the interest rates if we did did one and not the other? The answer would be no, it wouldn't affect the interest rates at all.
Okay.
Well, at least I would plan that it wouldn't. So. But hopefully that won't be an issue, but rising interest rates do concern me some.
John, is there a chance that the interest rates will rise between now and April thirteenth?
There's a hundred percent chance, Carla, the interest rate will either go up or down between now and April thirteenth. Sorry.
So that would be the instance where it might not make sense. To to sell one.
Yeah, I mean.
Both of the debt, both of the existing debt are right at three percent, that's a little more. So, but yeah, I mean, if the interest rate goes up to where um the savings is under three percent. Generally, well, maybe that's not a good spend of the the cost of issuance, right?
Well, the what, I think it was Carla who said that. You're right. I I looked at those numbers again. And both of these basically have the same interest rates. For it doesn't work for one, it's probably not gonna work for the other. It's just that the um. The fourteens are, I mean, yeah, created more savings. And that might be just due to structure and size. So even though they do have about the same interest rates, the fourteens. Give you a little bit more of a benefit as opposed to the seventeen, so there's a slight chance. But probably not material to do one, but not both. Or do both, not or not do both and not just do one. Probably wouldn't do just one.
One other point just to draw your attention to, because I know it's a question that comes up and maybe asked, but on April nine. About halfway down the page where it says March thirtieth. Just know that the documents will be sent to local banks, so if there are questions or. Anything you receive there that will be sent over to the board.
That's a good point. I think we had a we had a little bit of discussion that at least I did um. With some local banks um with the last time it was presented, so I'm glad to see that's in there so that our local banks get a opportunity to look at this.
I've got a lot of papers in front of me. Some of them are blue, and I wanna know. The blue is in reference to. Refunding certificates of participation, am I correct? Okay, what is the total? All these, what's the total of that item? Refunding. Of the um. Refunding the certificates of participation.
What total do you want?
I want the total outstanding of what we are refinancing, what we're how much it's going to be when we're done with this. Extra time, how many dollars will this, with the one million nine hundred and sixty-six thousand?
One nine oh three, it's what it'll be refinanced to. That's that's what we have right now. And then when it's refinanced, it'll be one point nine.
Okay, alright.
And then the green's a separate one, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
That is a revenue bond, is that correct?
Yeah.
And now that, as I'm understanding, is what we were wanting to do to accomplish. The infrastructure repair and all of these things, is that correct?
No, no.
Okay, where are we paying for that?
We haven't got there yet.
That's in the next.
Okay, so what are we doing with the green papers?
So the blue is the second set of Wagner apartments.
Okay.
Seventeen.
The green is the student center renovations and the housing that was consolidated in two thousand and fourteen.
The first group of Wagner apartments.
No, no.
We're not refinancing that because savings isn't.
It's the Buster Suites, is that right?
Buster Suites, the parking lot, and then the student center renovation.
And then that's the difference.
Okay.
The first set of Wagner apartments is not being brought to you there to consider.
Okay, so the total of the green.
If our outstanding is three point four six. And after refinance, it'll be two point nine five.
And the reason it's.
Which tables were those?
Table five and six.
The reason it's less is because of the bond reserve.
Right.
So the total of Wagner apartments is. Six thousand dollars, so six thousand dollars, sixty.
Sixty-two.
Thirty-four eighty-three and. One point nine six six and one point nine oh three, sixty thousand from them on the next page there.
Total savings for Wagner is on table three, that's the bottom.
Yeah, it's the sixty-three thousand.
Table three.
The savings report.
Correct.
Is the comparison of the two.
Okay.
And then the savings one, two for the green.
So we're saving money by doing the refinancing for both. I uh I still have to come back. In all of this. Where I was a month ago. And I asked Ryan one day, who's my, what's my priority here? And he said students. And I said, I disagree. My priority is my owners, the people that own me, people that elected me. And I am concerned. Of not liquidating assets that we have that could eliminate some of this new expense that we're looking at. I think it's a it's a mistake. If we can sell some property, if we can sell a vacant lot over there, I think that's in the best interest of the people that own us. The taxpayers, they are my boss.
Leonard, I appreciate your opinion, but let's stay on task with the. The. The issue.
I had a comment to make. I think it's appropriate to make it because I'm talking about what we're talking about right here, refinancing the Wagner apartments.
Please go ahead.
I'm done.
Alright, I have a concern because of the age of the West units. And if they go down, we have no place to put our students. I think we can make that work over there. That's why I am firmly behind this. Because I, if we have to go out and buy some more, we're hurting our taxpayers then more than we are with this because we're saving money.
The concern, I I understand that, but. Not getting any younger every day they go by, and you're putting like three hundred and some thousand dollars into upkeep it. Get that number down. But you're putting money into them right now, bringing them back up to where they should be. And that's not gonna stop.
Well, that that's true with any building we got on campus, so um. That doesn't go away. We need to mitigate it the best way possible.
Think circling back.
If I could. I was gonna say, if I could interject, uh whatever the issues those are, the refinancing will not change the legal. S- structure. I mean, if there's issues now, doing the refinancing won't improve it. Or or make it worse. Um. So um in fact, it'll free up cash, so maybe things could be addressed. Uh for that, so excuse me for interrupting. But whatever you do, this refinancing.
Well, I would say.
But what you refinance is what you got, you're accurate. I agree with you.
Yeah.
I would say circling back to the kind of and what John, I think, was talking about is. If we refinance these Wagner apartments, um take out even the that the other one, but we're just talking Wagner apartments. And we're saving close to sixty thousand, but yet it still looks in six months that. Oh, maybe we do need to sell them. It doesn't change anything on our refinance. We still save money. And we can, it's not like we're tied into paying it off. I mean, we can still sell them at that point. Right now, we're taking action that we're actually saving sixty thousand.
Okay, I guess I didn't understand that you were gonna sell the asset possibly.
I'm. I mean. I.
No, John, this was this is the prior discussion um that we had a month ago um. And and uh. For now, this discussion is on refinancing. The two thousand and fourteen series and the two thousand and seventeen series, right? And um. What I think Blake was referring to is if in the future, it doesn't look like we utilize this property. Like we expect, we still have that option to sell it in a later date.
Yeah. And if it's not.
The property being refinanced that was originally financed with the seventeen or with the uh other ones?
Or the other Wagner apartments, I mean.
The the seventeen.
Okay, so I wanna make sure that I'm understanding. So what we're looking at is. Okay, so, I want to make sure that I'm understanding, so what we're looking at is refinancing. The debt for a. An asset that you might want to sell?
No, I, I, I think.
Is that what I'm hearing?
No, the easiest way to clear this up is probably, there has been conversation, there, there's two sets of. Wagner apartments, Wagner apartments are what you had listed on, on tables one through four, so. Probably the best way to clear this up is what's being refinanced as far as our second set of Wagner apartments. Is going to be refinanced, therefore is to finish out the debts or something, if there was ever conversation with the board, it would be on the first set of. Wagner apartment apartments that are not under consideration. With any of the conversations.
Okay.
Okay.
So if, if we were to.
Okay, well, I apologize if I.
So.
Well, I apologize if I'm from where that wasn't necessary.
So let's, let's clarify, Luke Page tables are discussion of refinancing the Wagner property that is not. In the conversation of being sold. The, the units that have been involved in the conversation of being sold are not on these tables.
Yeah.
So that, that does make it where we can make these two separate conversations. Is that, okay?
And nothing is being sold at this point.
Correct.
Right, but even the ones that have been talked about are, is, is not the set that's included in this refinance, so.
Yeah, I didn't want to tell you you could sell it after we refinanced it, because that wouldn't be correct. So.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Still part of the Wagner group, but not this Wagner group.
Yeah.
So, probably at this point, we need to. Open item D.
Do we?
And, and then. Sign our resolution and vote on it.
Yeah, so there is. Page thirty three of your board package. I'll draw your attention there in the middle of the page, where it starts with trustee blank. Uh, whichever of the trustees chooses to make the motion, we'll start reading at that point. And read through the bold. And then the trustee that would. Make the second of the motion. She will read the second paragraph on page thirty three, it says trustee blank seconded the motion.
Trustee Ted Row. Resolution authorizing the offering for sale.
Presented.
Presented.
Well, no, that's kind of, that's.
So I'm gonna read this, that's something different, resolution authorizing the offering for sale or lease agreement certificates or participation. Series two oh two one A of Garden City Community College, Finy County, Kansas.
Trustee Wassinger seconded the motion to adopt the resolution, thereupon, the resolution was read and considered. And the question put to a roll call vote, the vote therein was as follows.
So then.
Okay. No.
What?
So now we have to, so you seconded the vote, now Beth has to read the, has to read the entire resolution. Starting on page thirty nine.
Oh, that whole thing.
And you got a couple pages either.
Okay.
So I start here again. Whereas Garden City Community College, Finy County, Kansas, the college. Has heretofore entered into a certain lease purchase agreement dated as of April twenty sixth, two thousand seventeen. The two thousand seventeen lease. And has issued its student union bookstore and dormitory system revenue bonds, series two thousand fourteen. Dated as of September first, two thousand fourteen, the series two thousand fourteen bond and. Whereas due to the current interest rate environment, there is an opportunity to issue lease agreements refunding certificates of participation in order to achieve. An interest cost savings on the obligations represented by the two thousand seventeen lease. And series two thousand fourteen bond described as follows, the refunded obligations. Series two thousand seventeen lease dated date April twenty sixth, two thousand seventeen. Years two thousand twenty one and thereafter, the amount of one million eight hundred thousand. Redemption date, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty one. Series two thousand fourteen bonds, September first, two thousand fourteen. Years two thousand thirteen and thereafter, in the amount of three million one hundred twenty thousand. Redemption date, June first, two thousand twenty one. Whereas the college has selected the firm of Ransom Financial Consultants LLC, Wichita, Kansas. Financial advisor, as financial advisor for one or more series of refunding certificates of participation. In a lease agreement of the college, the lease. To be issued in order to provide funds to refund the refunded obligations and. Whereas the college desires to authorize the financial advisor to proceed with the offering for sale of said refunding certificates of participation. And related activities and. Whereas one of the duties and responsibilities of the college is to prepare. And distribute a preliminary official statement relating to said refunding certificates of participation. And. Whereas the college desires to authorize the financial advisor and Gilmore and Bell P C Wichita, Kansas, special counsel. In conjunction with the vice president for administrative services slash CFO. To proceed with the present preparation and distribution of a preliminary official statement. And notice of certificate sale and to authorize the distribution thereof. And all other preliminary action necessary to sell said refunding certificates of participation. Be it resolved by the governing body of the Garden City Community College, Finy County, Kansas as follows. Section one, the college is hereby authorized to offer at competitive public sale. Approximately four million seven hundred thirty thousand dollars of refunding certificates of participation. Series two oh two one A. Evidencing a proportional interest of the owners thereof in the base, basic rent payments. To be made by the college pursuant to a lease agreement. The series third down, series two thousand twenty one A certificate. As described in the notice of certificate sale, the notice of certificate sale. Attached here to as exhibit A. And the preliminary official statement referenced herein for the purpose of refunding and refinancing the refunded obligations. Section two. The financial advisor is hereby authorized and directed to receive bids on behalf of the college. For the purchase of the series two oh two one A certificates. On April thirteenth, two oh two one. Upon the terms and conditions set forth in said notice of certificate sale. And to deliver all bonds so received to the board of trustees, the governing body. At its meeting to be held on such date at said time and place. At which meeting the governing body shall review such bids and shall approve a bid or reject all bids. Section three, the notice of certificate sale is hereby approved in substantially. Be the form attached here to. As exhibit eight, with such changes. And additions thereto as the vice president for administrative services slash CFO. Shall deem necessary or appropriate. And to use such document in connection with the public sale of the series two oh two one A certificates. Section four, the financial advisor in conjunction with special counsel. Is hereby authorized to prepare a preliminary official statement. And such representatives of the college are hereby authorized. To use such document in connection with the sale of the series two oh two one A certificates. Section five. The vice president for administri- administrative services slash CFO. In conjunction with the financial advisor and special counsel. Is hereby authorized and directed to give notice of said sale by transmitting copies of the notice of certificate sale and preliminary official statement. To prospective purchasers of the series two oh two one A certificates. Section six, for the purpose of enabling the purchaser purchaser to comply with the requirements of rule. Fifteen C two dash twelve of Securities Exchange Commission, the rule. The appropriate officers of the college are hereby authorized, A. To provide the purchaser a letter of, or certification to the effect that the college deems the information. Contained in the preliminary official statement to be final as of its date. Except for the admission of such information as is permitted by the rule. B. Covenant to provide continuous secondary market disclosure, disclose. Disclosure by annually transmitting certain financial information. And operating data and other information necessary to comply with the rule. To certain national repositories and the municipal securities rulemaking board as applicable. And C. Take such other actions or execute such other. Documents as such officers and their reasonable judgment deem necessary. To enable the purchaser to comply with the requirements of the rule. Section seven, the college agrees to provide the. To the purchaser within seven business days of the date of the sales of series two oh two one A certificates. Or within sufficient time to accompany any confirmation, the request payment from any customer of the purchaser. Whichever is earlier, sufficient copies of the final official statement. To enable the purchaser to comply with the requirements of rule fifteen C two dash twelve. Three and four of the Securities and Exchange Commission and within, with the requirements of rule G dash three two. Of the municipal securities rulemaking board. Section eight, the chairman, secretary of the board, vice president for administrative services slash CFO. And the other officers and representatives of the college, the financial advisor and special counsel. Are hereby authorized and direct to take such other action. As may be necessary to ca- carry out the public sale of the series two oh two one A certificates. Section nine, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption. Adopted.
If I, before you vote. Uh, bond counsel was notified of, of. Three changes and evidently that document was not distributed under the second whereas on the first page. The redemption date is not May fifteenth, it's May eighteen.
Okay.
Under the two thousand fourteen bonds, where it says two thousand and thirteen, I'm not sure what the, I marked through it. Whatever that is, it should be two thousand and twenty one and thereafter.
There's the top one in it.
The second one should be.
They should both be twenty twenty one, the bottom ones.
It should both be twenty twenty one. And under the third, whereas. The ransom financial consultant is my old firm, and those assets have been sold to ransom financial group, so that is who. It will be representing you. So with those amendments, the resolution is accurate.
You gotta redo it again.
Do I need to say with, with? Do I need to say with updates or anything? As amended on. What's today, March ninth, two thousand twenty one?
I think those are just technical amendments and. You guys okay to allow them to be there?
Finding the appropriate.
Correct. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to. Approve this resolution, series twenty twenty one A, is there any other discussion? So we'll do a roll call vote.
Beth, I.
Dang it, I.
Leonard, I.
Blake, I.
Shanda, I.
Marilyn, I.
So do I need to read, do I need to read that part?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, the chairman declared said resolution duly adopted, the resolution was then duly numbered, resolution number two zero two one.
Dash eight.
Dash eight, thank you, can sign, will sign, be signed by the chairman and the test advisor.
That's not usually a lot of work, it might run her out tonight, though. Nice job.
Before we move on to the second item, I'd like for the board. To consider to allow me to attend the April thirteenth meeting in person. I'm much more comfortable being able to answer questions where I can see you, quite honestly, I can't see you at all. Even over Zoom. So think about it and let me know if that would be okay, I'd be more than happy to. To come to Garden City for that purpose.
Yeah.
Does anybody have an objection to that? I don't, I personally don't have any objection.
John, you're welcome.
Okay, well, if it makes you feel any better, I've already had COVID, so I don't think I can give it to anybody else, but. Been there, done that, so. So let me know when you're ready to go to the next item.
Ready, so. Well, I just wanted to let the board know. The color coordination of the papers. So. The yellow papers. Are for an issuance amount. As we'll go through the same, uh, through the tables, so the yellow papers are for. Issue and amount of three point six million. The, the salmon color is for a larger issuance for four point. One, or four point one five million dollars and I'll let. About. Difference.
Yes, John, before, before we move in and have you go through. Your explanation, stand for questions there as well. I did want to just go through and preface some things with the board following last month's meetings. The last month, we've had conversations. Regarding certificate of participation financing, looking at several different projects. To address deferred maintenance, capital, projects here on campus. So part of, part of what I want to just kind of highlight in the end and cover again there, just so that there's. There's clarity and transparency on, on what it is that we're discussing. The projects that we talked about last month, uh, being a part of. The certificate of participation financing, uh, included. Items for addressing HVAC such as the chiller and boiler system. Uh, looking at transportation needs with a bus. Improved safety and security on campus with enhanced campus lighting across campus. Dishwasher system, uh, to replace. The system over in cafeteria. Transportation building, uh, to be able to take care of the assets, uh, that we have on campus with our fleet. And then also addressing deferred maintenance needs with the tunnel cap. Hydronic water pipe. Roof replacement on the. Suites. And also west hall upgrades, uh, so that was what was presented to you last month. One of the things, uh, this, this kind of bringing forth some conversations, and this leads into. both the conversation as far as on the yellow and salmon, with interest rates being where they're at. We went back to administration, went back to the uh facilities master's plan and looked at how it is, we might be able to help move the needle and address some other items that have been on master's facilities plan uh for upwards of seven to eight years. Two projects came forward from that there in the conversation and discussion. One is updates to Fine Arts Auditorium to update sound, to update lighting, to update fly rail system which is on the stage as well as the curtains. Fine Arts Auditorium uh has not been updated since two thousand twelve and with as much traffic as there is, it goes through not only for campus events and activities, fine arts events orientation. There are a considerable number of community groups that come through and uh pre-COVID and post-COVID uh to utilize this facility. So there are upgrades that that are uh that are needed to be able to have this facility in the in the manner in which we choose to have it there for for usage. The other project that we looked at there is in two thousand twelve, we had purchased uh the rodeo grounds, Fairgrounds Arena. And we have purchased that property for a dollar back in two thousand twelve. And it not had significant improvements have been made since that purchase. During this last spring, uh, we did go in and do some updates there with our maintenance department. But what we were looking at there is specifically things that are affecting recruiting with our rodeo programs. Uh, currently, we only have space for twenty stalls. Uh, so students that bring their own horses and have a significant investment in livestock and the horses that they bring do not have capabilities to be able to hold sufficient. So what we are recommending uh with rodeo updates, we are going we go in and make improvements in the stalls, uh, currently have availability for twenty. We would increase that to forty. There is also some drainage um issues there with the bins that if uh there is significant drainage that we need to address there that hinders not only the livestock, but also uh has raised on interior facility as well. And then the other area uh that we are addressing, the warm-up area that leads into the arena for uh the individuals prior to going out into competition. So with what we had proposed last month of what we discussed with the Board, uh, we were looking uh just right at three point one million. What we are going forward on recommendation and for discussion tonight there would be the auditorium updates. It would have an additional uh four hundred and forty thousand and then rodeo grounds updates to five hundred thousand. So when you take a look at uh, and again, the reason why we looked at this and the reason why we bring this forward for consideration uh because of where interest rates are at, we go like this, help move the needle on deferred maintenance uh items that have been on our facilities plan since two thousand twelve uh that has not been addressed since that time and it helps to be able to get those properties uh in alignment with where they need to be at there for campus, not only from the student standpoint, but also the community standpoint. So the two differences, Carl and John can go through and kind of explain this, but what we are presenting the Board there with tonight is uh the yellow option, which is financing that will be the total of three point six million. So the yellow option would include if the Board only chooses to address either uh the auditorium or the rodeo upgrades, only one of the the projects that we presented tonight. And then the salmon uh colored document in front of you would be for COP issuance of four point one five million, which we covered all projects uh that have been that have been brought forward last month as well as auditorium and rodeo there. So wanted to wanted to highlight and just go through those projects um and definitely stand for any answered questions on that before we move into conversations with John.
I just, can I ask why there wasn't one just without the two updates?
Yeah, we uh, we talked about that there, we did not uh, we did not bring that there. If that's the if that's the direction of the Board, then we would uh we would, John, bring that forward there next month.
Okay.
We did not prepare that and bringing that there this month.
Okay.
Or it was just kind of anticipating what it is, it's interest rates may be, um, but this was yeah, these were the two scenarios that we brought forward this month.
Okay.
And what was the amount of this that you said was for auditorium or rodeo?
The auditorium updates would be uh four hundred and forty thousand. And rodeo updates would be five hundred.
Those are just loose estimates.
Sure. And so that's the original master plan step we discussed plus four forty to five hundred to allocate for that. And this would be master plan plus another million to do, but okay. Just making sure my train of thought hasn't wandered here.
Thanks for asking.
When most of these projects we approved last year.
Correct. Yeah, I think the other, I mean, kind of going back to your your question there too, Blake, I mean, the other conversation that there as far as bringing back only what was discussed there last month was that it, you know, if you remember last year when we had brought these projects forward, while we got debt service that we had paid off you're right at four hundred and fifty thousand. And so we have that debt service that is that is paid off there and it felt like bringing forward the additional projects stills below where it is that we have the availability of funds to be able to address additional deferred maintenance needs. And so that was that was the other thought that we had.
If I remember correctly, these are things that maybe should have been long done a long time ago. It's all crumbling around us, is that right? A lot of it needs to be done.
Yeah, the, I mean, the, I would say that the tunnel cap and the hydronic water pipes, if these are not points that that we want to consider as far as the COP financing, they will be items that we need to bring forward to the Board here to take care of this summer. So regardless of whether we do the COP financing, which we are recommending, if we did not, those are two critical items that we cannot go any longer without addressing.
Part of that tunnel cap has been done before, updated in years.
We've had two phases uh that have been done currently. Uh, this would be on the interior quad of campus is what this proposal was.
This will complete the tunnel cap.
There's actually one, I think Derek, Derek's on here there as well, but I believe there's one additional phase that we would have then as well.
Yeah, correct. There's one more in front of the John Collins Building. That'll be the last phase of the tunnel cap replacement.
And when do you anticipate doing that?
Uh, possibly next summer. That that tunnel cap is in pretty good shape. Uh, there is some uh patches that we have made and that we're currently making. Uh, I'm not too concerned about the safety of that tunnel cap right now.
The one that's critical in nature is on the interior quad of the.
Correct.
Would it be cost effective for us to do it all at once?
Possible. I mean, they, it goes per square foot, so we're not going to get any price breaks or anything like that.
The auditorium update and rodeo stall updates, are those notice to protest?
No. No.
Okay.
You know, that auditorium has needed updated for a long time. If you ever tried to go to a performance in there or perform in there, it's second rate. Needed to be taken care of a long time ago.
This is one step, one step to help to address some of the need.
Is it time to read again?
No, John, John, go ahead and explain the the financing.
You're on mute again there, John.
You have to unmute.
Where it has to be unmuted, it's there. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, now I have a picture of, I think, Colin Lamb on my computer.
Aren't you lucky?
I'm going to see, I'm going to play with it here for just a second. No, I'm not going anywhere. So can you hear me, though?
Yeah, yes.
And I see you.
And it has your name.
Okay, all right. Well, I can't see you all at all. So anyway, um, we have eight tables for you to think about. And I apologize, I should have put together a summary table. So while Colin was talking, I kind of wrote one down on my um, piece of paper here. Table ten is a three point four million dollar project with needing to borrow three point six million over a fifteen year amortization. The estimated annual debt service is two mil- two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven sixty-five and total over four million oh forty-six. And I kind of got ahead of myself. What we're presenting here is two different projects cost amortized over fifteen and twenty years. So the Board will need to decide table ten, eleven, twelve or thirteen. And I'll just run through those real real quick and then we can come back with questions. Table eleven would be a four million dollar project with a four million one hundred and fifty thousand dollar borrowing amortized over fifteen years, average debt service of three hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and forty-one with an estimated total cost of four million six fifty-nine. Table twelve is again a three point four million dollar project borrowing three million six oh five because the underwriter would need to be paid more to amortize over a twenty year period. Average annual debt service is estimated to be two hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars with total cost of four million three forty-seven. And then the final table in this initial analysis is table thirteen, four million dollar project. Four million one hundred and sixty thousand total borrowing, twenty years, two hundred and fifty thousand, four ninety-eight with a total debt service of five million nine. So you have the little bit of a conundrum. Of course, the annual debt service for a twenty year will be less than fifteen, but your total payments over the life, of course, is less with the fifteen versus the twenty. So uh, we staff has talked about the projects that are included. So the decision will be made in it, do you want a three point four million dollar project or a four million dollar project? And do you want it amortized over fifteen years or over twenty years?
Can I, can I just ask the feasibility of a fifteen year payoff versus a twenty year? I mean, from from your guys' standpoint, is a fifteen year doable with cushion? Or is it more likely the twenty year? That's going to be safer bet, even though we pay more or or are we, you know? Yeah.
Well, in um, so the um field payment will be paid off in on June first of twenty twenty-three. Those payments total three hundred thousand dollars a year. So uh, in twenty, in twenty twenty-one and, you know, the first two cycles of that um maybe, you know, it was obviously going to be a little tighter. Do not feel that it's uh unmanageable. I did have a conversation today with with Deb, our comp controller, just to, you know, make sure that she didn't have any reservations and um, due to the interest cost of almost being double, we both were of the opinion that it would be in our best interest to do the fifteen year um amortization.
Can you run by that, just the three hundred, three hundred, little over three hundred thousand um is the debt service on the field?
A little under.
A little under? And that start, that would be paid off in May of twenty-three? So two payments is roughly what we're looking at? Three?
The first year, um, we have on the refinancing significant savings. And due to our um revenue and expense position currently, I have no hesitation at all.
So Board, I think um we have like four paths here that we can go. Um, let's try to to cut it in half here first. Discussions about whether to fund one of the extra projects or both extra projects along with the deferred maintenance.
Or request they come back without either special project next?
That would be.
The two added projects, as as Leonard mentioned, are so long in the need.
Yeah. Oh, I agree. I just wanted to make sure we all knew that that was an option as well.
Yep. I mean, I I know the Fine Arts was brought up several times. It was kicked aside to do something else and boom, I just think both of them need to be done.
I don't know what the future really hopes for some of these things, but I know there've been times that there've been banking associations that had annual meetings in Garden City. We have functions in Pauline Joyce. Uh, there have been other groups that have been that have held functions in there, but today, if you went over there, you'd be a little ashamed of the seats that you sat in and the way it felt. I think for for Garden City Community College reputation, anything else, we need to have first class. And I think for that reason, uh, Pauline Joyce is necessary. I think it'll be used a lot more than it is now if it is compatible with what people are trying to do. So in answer to maybe certain question, I'd like to see us approach it with both of them in here. Years and all of that is really ox and ox for me. I just want to see us get the infrastructure straight and do what we need to do to do what Derek needs done and get these other two added to it.
I agree with that too. And it also brings about improvement for students. I know that Tim Boyd does a good job of doing this, but it might get better quality or mortgages.
Additional students.
It's really dangerous down there if you go down there to a rodeo while it's going on. It's too easy for people to get hurt.
And you're right beside the river. You're going to have some drainage issues that were, I mean, just have to be addressed.
But I mean, the compaction of all of the horses and riders and everything right through in that small area.
And it always floods right through there, always.
I've done that for years.
Yeah. But didn't you say drainage was one of the things that would be addressed with this?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I think that there really, and you guys have touched on it and we'll leave it to us there as well, but I'm really going to take a look at it as far as as far as impact these programs have. Our fine arts programs, if you could look at it over the last three or four years, that's significant. that significantly increased in, in enrollment. We've added orchestra in this program this past year. So there is enhanced, uh, needs that will come from fine arts facility. The rodeo facility is, is one of those that, again, comes back to students and, and you know, students that are coming in that are, that are spending tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands on not only the horses, but the, the trailers and the equipment that they're bringing with them.
I think they call it tack.
Yes.
You are so smart.
I don't know that technical word, yeah.
The rigs that those kids come in here in are hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, when I visited with Jim Boy about these projects, um, he, we did identify that he's had the largest number this year that has been in residents live. So.
And how many is that?
Eleven out of fourteen. So, so that's good.
Yeah.
And that would just have the opportunity to grow if, um, with additional stalls.
And I would just like to mention that our, one of our former Board of Trustees, Melvin, worked hard to try and get the, the Horse Palace improved. And so I, I like the idea that we're, um, doing some of that, so. And, and again, it's for the students. It's not for Melvin, but.
Another aspect, too, is that it'll be.
Is why.
If we don't improve it, we're gonna be liable if something happens.
And that's a good point, yeah.
Notice some of these other community colleges and see, look at their rodeo facilities. I mean, few bands, a few bucking chutes, and they're not the quality that we've got.
They're worse or better?
Their programs are, are not up to what I think ours is.
Oh, cool. Okay.
Jim Boy works pretty hard in it.
Yeah, he does.
He has to stay leader of the pack on that.
Yeah. Okay.
They have several good announcements, so.
All right. Can, so let, would you guys be okay to do a motion to approve the, um, the additional projects with the deferred maintenance? Let's start with that first.
We're gonna start reading.
No, not, this isn't a read yet.
Not a motion to approve it, to the, also, I started discussing that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, um, the addition of the two added projects to the deferred maintenance for our certificate of participation.
Beth, aye.
David, aye.
Leonard, aye.
Blake, aye.
Shanda, aye.
Marilyn, aye. Thank you. Okay, so then the second part of this is to talk about whether to finance fifteen years or twenty years.
With the savings, I think the shorter time we go.
I think.
I, I, I'm in favor of the fifteen year.
I think, as Carla stated, I mean, it's doable. You take the savings from the savings on the refinance of, of the seventeen and fourteen. That takes off to your first payment roughly. Um, you've got one other payment in there before the field gets paid off roughly. So at that point, that field payment just kicks over to this. You're never above what the field payment is or very close to it. So reverting back to what Carla had mentioned and, and checking with the financial side of things, that they, if they're, if they're confident in the fact that the fifteen year is, I think we take their, I, I personally take their recommendation and their knowledge and expertise and run with that versus delaying it out and paying close to four hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand more. I mean, if you can pay it off, pay it off, you know? Even, even as low as interest rate as it is. So that would be my.
But yeah, you get up to the twenty year and
Yeah.
start getting over two, and that seems crazy high to us right now. So.
Carla, you're the CFO. Would you reassure me in what Blake has said?
Yes, I would definitely. Um, we have had previous discussion and it would be my recommendation to, uh, my previous discussion administratively, it'll be my, uh, recommendation and also Deb Nicholson's recommendation to do the fifteen financing. You know, we, when we visited about and saw all the numbers today, uh, really the payment times aren't that different. You know, we, we invest our monies, uh, based on when, when those large payments are due. You know, a year and a half ago, that looked a little different. But, you know, hopefully that will turn around, so the investment of those excess monies will, um, return. But, yeah, I don't think, I don't think we're in a position that warrants spending over three hundred thousand dollars more in interest to, over, to, for five more years. I think we're.
And I really don't feel like any of this is new to us. I feel like we put this on pause because of the uncertainty of COVID. And I think we've just added two new projects, but you're gonna have new projects come up over a year's time, so I.
Okay. Any other comments? So, um, let's entertain, I'll entertain a motion to, um, proceed with the, well, if you guys are okay with that, with the fifteen year amortization schedule.
I'll make a motion, um, that we proceed with the, uh, fifteen year amortization, uh, for the project cost of a total of four, project cost of four million dollars or the issue size of four point one five. Uh, do I need an interest rate and everything? Or just?
No, we'll get to that later.
Okay, okay.
We'll read it.
Okay, so I just.
You're on table sixteen, is that correct?
Table eleven. Eleven. So I, my motion, what's that?
I jumped, sorry, go ahead.
So my motion is to, uh, approve the fifteen year amortization of the project cost for four million dollars. We're right?
Carla, I just want to make sure we go on the right one.
Yeah, so.
Table eleven.
But table eleven and table fifteen.
Yeah, we'll talk about table fifteen in just a minute.
Yeah, so you can.
So it is, is the amount that he said, right?
Yeah.
Fifteen is just more detail.
Right, so we have a motion, and a second. Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Beth, yes.
David, aye.
Leonard, aye.
Blake, aye.
Shanda, aye.
Marilyn, aye. So now we can do the official.
Not yet.
Oh.
I, I get to talk a little bit more.
All right.
Okay, table fifteen was referred to. You're going to be shortly considering a resolution of intent to do these improvements. And within that resolution of intent, it'll have an estimated project total cost, which will be four million one fifty. Projects themselves, four million, total cost, four million one fifty for its principal. But within that resolution, I'll also state what the anticipated interest cost is for a total principal and interest cost over the life of the issue. What table fifteen is, is that we took table eleven, and that was twenty five basis points over Reno County scale. Table fifteen is a hundred basis points over, uh, the Reno County scale. And the reason why we did that is that somewhere, sometime earlier, we talked about interest rates going up and down. If we published the first table, table eleven, and interest rates go up and exceed the total amount that was estimated, then we can pursue those projects that are subject to notice and protest. So therefore, on table fifteen, we added some additional interest costs to give us some leeway. With that, I talked to staff and said if, will the difference between four million nine twenty three and four million six fifty nine cause someone to protest it? And we didn't think so. Someone was gonna protest that they weren't gonna protest over three hundred thousand dollars. So, so when we go through the resolution, there's some options in it. And I would like to go with those first before it's read. So when it is read, we don't have to go back and make amendments to it. Would that be all right? And I can do that now if you like.
That would be good.
Yes.
Okay, so on page one of the resolution, under section one, there's four bracketed numbers. By previous motion.
Three.
My previous motion. Let me know when you're all ready.
Ready.
Okay, on, under section one of the resolution, under consideration, by previous motion, you decided to go with a C O P estimated amount of four million one hundred and fifty thousand. So when the resolution is read, you will want to use that number. On page two of the resolution, under section nine, it talks about estimated total payments on there. And can you bear with me for a second? Four nine twenty three. Oh, they didn't include the trustee fees. That's the difference. But.
Do we need to add that thirty thousand?
Well, I would like to go ahead and add it. It just gives us a little more leeway. So that number would be four million nine twenty three, nine seventy five.
Nine seventy five or nine seventy six?
It, whichever you wish.
Let's throw that X dollar in there.
What are we doing? Four nine two three nine seven six?
Yeah. Now, if things, if things got really weird and interest rate shot up, we could segregate out the projects that are not noticed and protested, that are not subject to notice and protest, but we wanted for disclosure purposes, we just wanted to include everything. So, but hopefully that we won't have that discussion when we come back with the bids. So before that resolution is read, I wanted to make sure that we went through those numbers. And if we could go back to the handouts to table eighteen, is that okay?
Table eighteen?
White, white, the white is the schedule.
And let me know when you're ready.
We're ready.
Okay, tonight you're reviewing, uh, the plans of finance and approving or considering a resolution for the improvements. The next line down, and that's in bold, the next line down is that this notice is published in local newspaper for two consecutive weeks. Then you'll see about four rows down that thirty days after the second publication is the end of the protest period. Uh, the protest requirement, I believe, is five percent of the registered voters who voted in the last general election would have to sign a petition to protest it. And if one was sufficient, then we couldn't proceed without an election. But if there is no protest petition, then we're authorized to proceed with the projects on April twenty second of twenty one. Due to the size and length of this issue, we're probably gonna have it rated, but I'm gonna talk to Carla about that some more since it's only fifteen. I, I, let me think about it, but we got that cost built in if we decide to do so. But between now and end of the protest, we're gonna get things set up and take it to standard and pores in case we decide to do so. On about May twenty fourth, uh, we'll be back to you if there's no, well, if there is a protest, we'll have to decide if you wanna proceed with an election or, or not. But on May fourth, we'll be back with a resolution calling for the sale, much to like, uh, what we did tonight for the refunding. I have pounded and pounded and pounded to, uh, my staff and bond counsel that documents aren't to be sent to the local banks on May twenty fifth. They are to be received by the local banks on tw- May twenty fifth. And we're hoping that, that two weeks is sufficient time for them to review documents. I mean.
You're muted, John.
You're muted again.
No, mute it one more.
There you go.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, this really is the bind here. So I don't know if you heard my speech, but I pounded and pounded that local banks need to have these bid documents by May twenty fifth and then the other day for the refunding. Uh, they're more actually likely to bid on the refunding because they're shorter, shorter bonds. Then we distribute to other investment banks, bids would be redo on June eighth, twenty one, and funds would be received on July twenty first, or excuse me, July first. So that is the schedule. And then if you wish to proceed, I guess how you get to read a resolution.
Start up here.
Um, you start on page fifty one.
No.
Oh, she doesn't have to do that thereupon. Don't you have to do the short one first?
The motion and the second.
The motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, we have to start fifty one.
So.
We actually did the roll call vote first, who made the motion and who made the second.
Well, I'm, I made the motion.
Leonard, aye.
And let, uh, yep. Want me to read? Okay, so starting at the matter. Yes, the matter of authorizing the community college to enter into a lease purchase transaction came onto consideration and was discussed. Thereupon, there was introduced a resolution entitled as follows. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of Garden City Community College determining the advisability of finance and acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of certain improvements by the exec execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement. Thereupon, trustee Wassinger moved that said resolution be passed. Dave, you want to read that second?
The motion was second by trustee Grob.
And then we go into the whole. Okay.
Said resolution was duly read and considered and upon being put, the motion for the passage of said resolution was carried by the vote of the Board of Trustees, the vote being as follows.
And then I read the whole
Yeah.
thing. So resolution on page fifty three, right?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number twenty twenty one dash two?
We named the first one A.
Or, oh, B, okay, B, okay. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Garden City Community College determining the advisability of finance and acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of certain improvements by the exec
Execution.
Execution and delivery of the lease purchase agreement. Whereas, the Board of Trustees of Garden City Community College, the college, has considered the needs of the college, its students, and its constituents for certain rodeo facility improvements, a new chiller, bus acquisition, campus lighting for security purposes, boiler replacement, a new dishwasher system, a new transportation building, replacement of a section of the tunnel cap, replacement of the hydronic water pipe, bronk buster suite roof and replacement, west hall restroom repairs and replacements, and water heater system replacement, and theater improvements on or near the college campus in Garden City, Kansas, the improvements. And has found and determined that the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of the improvements is in the public interest and whereas the governing body the governing body has considered various means of financing the acquisition, construction, installation and equipping of the improvements and has found that and determined that it would be in the public interest to acquire, construct, install and equip the improvements through the execution and delivery of the lease purchase agreement and whereas pursuant to KSA 71 dash 201 and subject to the conditions set forth in KSA 10 dash 111116C. The college has legal authority to authorize the acquisition, construction, installation and equipping of the improvements and the financing of such acquisitions through the exec execution and delivery of the lease purchase agreement. Now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Garden City Community College, section one. Authorized to acquire, construct, install and equip the improvements. The college is hereby authorized to complete final plans and specifications and to contract for the acquisition, construction, installation and equipping of the improvements at the estimated cost of 4,150,000. Section two, intend to enter into lease purchase agreement, the board of trustees shall come commence negotiation to enter into a lease purchase agreement, the lease. And if advantageous to issue certificates of participation therein, the certificates to provide financing for the acquisition, construction, installation and equipping of the improvements, which least shall contain such terms, conditions and provisions as shall be acceptable to the Board of Trustees. Ranson Financial.
Group.
Group of Wichita, Kansas, the financial advisor is hereby designated as the financial advisor to the college for the purpose of entering into such negotiations with suitable leases. Section three, conditions to the execution and delivery of lease purchase agreement and the issuance of certificates of participation. The execution and the delivery of the lease purchase agreement and issuance of certificate is subject to the publication and protest period requirements of KSA 10 dash 1116C adoption of the resolution approving the form of authorizing the execution and delivery of the lease. And such legal documents as may be necessary in connection with it, the terms of which shall be satisfactory to the board of trustees and the leaser named therein. Section four, expenditure of funds and anticipation of financing in order to permit and expedite the acquisition, construction, installation and equipping of the improvements and re and realization of the public benefits to the, to be derived from it, the college may expend lawfully available funds prior to the execution of delivery of the lease to be reimbursed upon execution of delivery of the lease. Section five, authorization to sell certificates. The college hereby authorizes the offering for the sale of certificates and authorizes the financial advisor to assist in negotiating the sale of such certificates to the purchaser, therefore the purchaser. Section six, preliminary official statement, the financial advisor in consultation with the vice president for administration services slash CFO, the college attorney and Gilmore and Bell PC, the college board council, special counsel is authorized to prepare a preliminary official statement for the certificates. The vice president for administration services slash CFO is authorized to approve the final form of such preliminary official statements, such approval being conclusive evidence of the college approval thereof. Section seven, compliance with disclosure rules. A, for the purpose of enabling the purchaser to comply with the requirements of rule 15C2 dash 12 of the Securities Exchange Commission, the rule, the chairman and the vice president of administration services slash CFO are each hereby authorized I, to provide the purchaser a letter of certification to the effect of the college deems the information contained in the preliminary official statement to be the final as of its date, except for the omission of such information as is permitted by the rule and two I to convenient, uh, to convey, to provide continuous secondary market disclosure by annually transmitting certain financial information and operating data and other information necessary to comply with the rule to certain national repositories and the municipal securities rulemaking board as applicable and three I to take such other actions or execute such other documents as such officers in the reasonable judgment deemed necessary to enable the purchaser to comply with the requirements of the rule. B, the college agrees to provide to the purchaser within seven business days of the date of purchase contract for the certificates or within sufficient time to accompany any confirmation that we request payment from the customer or purchaser, whichever is earlier, sufficient copies of the final official statement to enable the purchaser to comply with the requirements of the rule 15C2 dash 12B4 of the Securities and Exchange Commissions and, and with the requirements of rule G dash 32 of the municipal securities rulemaking board. Section eight, declaration of official intent, the resolution shall constitute a declaration of official intent under treasury regulations, section 1 dot 150 dash 2. Section nine, total of payments, publication of resolution. The expected total of all payments to be made by the college pursuant to the lease excluding amounts required for maintenance taxes or insurance on the improvements, um, is 4,923,976. The security of the board of trustees is hereby authorized and directed to publish this resolution once each week for two consecutive weeks and, and a newspaper of general circulation within the boundaries of the college district. If a protest petition signed by not less than 5% of the qualified voters of the college district, as determined by the vote for secretary of state at the last general election is filed with the county election officer within 30 days following the last publication of the resolution. The proposed lease shall not take effect unless approved by the majority of qualified voters of the college district voting at an election to be held thereon as prescribed in KSA 1, 10 dash 1116C. Section 10, further authority, the colleague, the officials of the college, the financial advisor, the purchaser, the college attorney, special counsel and other consultants are authorized to proceed with the planning and document preparation of the improvements, the lease, the certificate and other legal documents necessary in order to comply with the intent of the resolution, subject to final approval of such documents by the board of trustees. Adopted by the Board of Trustees of Garden City Community College this ninth day of March 2021. And.
Yeah, we still have a motion in a second to approve this resolution. Let's do a roll call.
Beth, approve.
David, uh.
Leonard, I.
Blake, I.
Shanda, I. Marilyn, I.
The chairman declares the resolution duly passed and the resolution was then duly numbered, resolution number 2021B. Carried by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I'll get the amendments to Gilmore and Bell tomorrow and they'll help get the resolution published. And I'll see you all in about 30 days.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
For giving us the opportunity and we'll see you again soon. Thank you. Any questions before I take off?
This is the, um, this goes to the paper.
Additional information provided that, hey, just.
Um, I would like to take a 10 minute break, guys.
I would too.
I, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
See that little paragraph? I thought that's what we were going to have to read.
That was.
That was just peaches ice in your mouth and you get re, re hate with the. Okay, I'm going to go sit in my car and watch some concert for a minute. All right.
Elsine, another water?
Yes.
But can I have the third one? This is.
I have one more minute.
Get started.
Peter texted me literally six minutes before we went on break and said her section just got done. I tuned in so I can say at least I saw part of the H writers and I'll be able to rewind it and watch it on Facebook later. She's a trumpet player. Plays piano as well, so she wants to do jazz band next year. Can't decide whether she wants to do piano or trumpet, but what's jazz band?
Alright guys, I have 8:06, so it's been 10 minutes, so we'll reconvene the trustee meeting. And going back to our agenda. We completed agenda item number two. Yay, thank you. We're moving on. Number three, we're on the confirmation of monitoring reports. And we're starting on page 57 in the booklet here. So the first monitoring report is on general executive constraints, number 10. The president shall not fail to ensure a safe and healthy environment on campus. And his interpretation goes from page 57 to 64, quite extensive. There is information in there from freshman orientation, student communication and the system that they've installed or using. Brunkbuster Wellness Center and its remodel. The campus police department has a section in there talking about campus emergency or disaster preparedness. Human resources has a section of how they contributed to the COVID response and actions. And of course, student health services is a big part of this. Ms. Miller, our nurse, contributed a lot to the COVID response. The testing, the quarantining, isolations, and now she's in surveillance. As well as she continued her regular duties of lots of student education and being available for students. It also included some Title IX training. Derek offered some information from facilities and operations again in regards to COVID response. And the last section was on updates from for student safety. So I think our president and our staff have done a wonderful job here. Does anybody have any thoughts or questions about safe and healthy environment on campus? President Ruda, I would commend you. I think that's one of the most important parts of your job is student safety and you've done a great job. Thank you.
Well, it's comprehensive across campus, but it's been a big portion of this last year, for sure.
Yeah. Okay, the second monitoring report is on page 65. Financial conditions at any time shall not incur fiscal jeopardy or compromise the board's priorities. In that is included our monthly reports on the financial condition. And part of that is the summary page that Carla provides each month that helps us out. And it's connected to the four pillars of the strategic plan, which is nice to see. Any questions or comments?
Good job.
Okay, the third item that we're looking at is in our board job description, item number six. And that's to monitor the outcomes and professional conduct of our organization's endowment and BAA. So Shanda, I'll let you report on that.
And I know you've had some conversations with Jeremy as well, so if I'm missing something or missing some detail, please. I'm not good at this. Of course, this time of year, it's all about the auction. It will be held online again. Starting April 7th, closing April 9th, they will do a live feature on April 9th from 7 to 9. So some of the larger auction items will be up for live bids, not just the silent online bidding feature that the others are for the first few days. The first opportunity for them to have a live in-person event is going to be the Ride for the Future, which is April 24th. They're bringing in food trucks to provide the meals so everybody can still social distance, but still get to participate in this. From the audit, there were some recommendations from Louis Hooper and Dick. One of the recommendations was how the checks and reconciliation was presented to the board. And some changes in accounting, some were reconciling to the bank statement. They are now completely reconciling to Datatel. And that was actually changed back in October of 2020. So by the time the audit actually happened, this change has been made, but it was in bookwork after the close date of the last fiscal year. So that improvement has been made. And another recommendation they had made, what they would do for the Endowment Association was basically gave us a cheat sheet on the checks that gave us what the checks were for and give us some more detail. And made it larger and easier for us to read on the screen. They wanted us to see what directly came from Datatel. So now they're providing the actual Datatel sheet and still giving us our description and we can verify that those ballots match and see exactly what comes out of Datatel as well. One discussion was that using a variable weight for the endowed rate. In the past, an endowed rate had been set prior to the investments growing. So you kind of have to guess. They're going to go to a variable rate instead of this flat endowed rate. So they can match their payout rate with what their returns are. And that would allow less risk on returns to the endowed accounts when returns didn't meet expectations. And it'll also allow for them to kind of build some reserves. They are looking at assessing a fee based on the recommendation of Louis Hooper and Dick on the pass-through scholarships. Right now, the endowment staff has been doing that free of charge. So to help mitigate those costs of administration of all of these scholarships. And they are looking at applying a small management fee to those pass-through scholarships to help pay for the the crew and everything in there to take care of that. The auditors went to one institution to get signature cards. And they were given signature cards from an account from back in 2012. Not the CDs that were open in January of 2020. So of course, that was a ding on the audit, I'd say, but not one I'm real concerned about. That was lost in translation kind of thing. Signature cards were just updated in February for all accounts with the new officers that came in in January. The finance committee is also going to be taking additional steps. They've been taking steps financially for the last few years, including diversifying to multiple financial advisors instead of Nihard. And they are also going to increase the frequency that the financial advisors report to them. Right now, it's kind of on an annual basis. So they're looking at doing that every six months going forward to kind of touch base with them more. There has been some discussion that more financial advisors would be a good idea as well. However, they're at where they're at because that's where the cost breaks come in. And so as funds build and they can capitalize on that, that is something looking at going forward. But more oversight from the finance committee for now on that. He had been invested in a REIT starting back in 2006, and this REIT has been nothing but problematic. It was not publicly held and it actually split into two. One was like the hotel side and one was more the shopping mall side of real estate. So they've had a hard time doing anything with that. There actually is a buyer that has put an offer out there that will clear that out of the Endowment Association and they have they're putting policies in place going forward not to allow their financial advisors to invest in anything that is not publicly traded. Because you're kind of at the mercy of a buyer coming to you, from how I understand that. But 2020, of course, was a difficult year for everyone, and so fundraising is that much more difficult when your donors are struggling. Despite that, we had some very generous grants, some investment gains, and some COVID relief funding packages. As of Monday night's meeting, Endowment Association assets are up 1.2 million compared to this same time in the calendar last year. So, I mean, that's, I thought that was quite promising. So that's promising. And there are some other grants and donations that could possibly coming before the end of this semester. So fingers crossed that that helps boost your that financial position even a little further, so. Any additions or questions?
No, thank you. I think the only other thing, I mean, and you kind of go into your last point there too, I mean Jeremy did pursue the PPP loans, which helped helped enable some savings there as well. So I think he's taken some steps to to try to help the endowment through this last year and position it in a better place.
It's been able to leave the investments as investments and not be needed for working capital to survive, so that's.
I was never aware all this time that they were the hotel motel.
That REIT, you'd see it on our deal and they didn't like it because we couldn't get monthly statements. Well, there is no monthly statement because it wasn't publicly traded, so it was just problematic.
All the time I was on the board, I never knew about that.
You did?
I'm, no, I say probably for the best that you gotta get rid of it.
Years ago, I started pulling out fighters and I'm like, no, no, no. So I've been definitely an advocate for and I think they're doing a good job in the right direction.
Any other questions for Shanda? Awesome. Dave?
Let you know, the pandemic continues wreak havoc into every aspect of business. The A was no exception. Caused all sports communities moved to the spring semester, which had a severe effect on finances with the BAA. As board was getting sponsorships and selling tickets for the athletic programs if all was canceled. And thus eliminating people from participating. As we know, the conference has won the number of spectators to advance. Incision may not start for a minute and there are no concessions, thus one name. In September, reporter covered avenues, BA board was exploring to assist with these shorefalls. Board hosted a golf tournament in October and started working with E team sponsors to raise some funds. So far, the E team sponsors where each sport participates raised approximately $35,280. And golf tournament raised $6,031. Their total, $41,310. Board hasn't had a meeting since December. Meeting was canceled in January since the new idea had just started and the board wanted to give him a chance to settle in his job. February meeting was canceled due to the extreme weather. I'm talking with some members, they are looking forward to getting back to genuinely building the organization. They have been genuinely looking for additional members for the board. I believe they would like any help they can get. Once they, you know, sports were canceled, buy tickets, buy sponsorships.
Yeah, that is one item. You had mentioned that as well, and I know the auditors, they brought it up there for the last few years. And then the bylaws of BAA, it does mention they'll have no less, no fewer than 12 members. So that's something I've talked with Jeff that's trying to help him be able to be able to get that number of board members up to where it needs to be.
Now they add one that's interested in softball and athletics.
How many, how many do they have right now?
Six, seven. Six or seven.
Do you count towards that 12 or are you just a?
I'm just an observer.
Yeah, and I'm.
I'm an observer that throws my voice into quite often. If I don't think it's going to fly with what's through it. And I did provide them with some of this of the audit, the information we had got reconciled, so.
Well, I appreciate you guys' reports. I think they're very thorough. Thank you very much. So I would say we are accepting the monitoring reports as presented for the three indicators that we looked at. Our second section is reviewing our monitoring language. And so the first one is personal enrichment. It's an ends, it's on page seven of our policy governance book. Recipients pursuing individual interests will be personally enriched. Outreach will serve the needs of the community. Have any suggestions for changes? I would entertain any of your comments or thoughts. Moving on, the second one that we're looking at is on page four, the essential skills. If you recall, last month's report from President Ruda was pretty lengthy in describing how they measure and include these indicators. But I would point out to number four, students will develop an awareness of diversity. President Ruda sent us an email earlier about the colleges developing a committee to work on diversity, equity, and inclusion. So in response to this, this essential skill has to do with students developing or being aware of that. But I think we could enhance our situation here for being involved in diversity, inclusion, and equity by including some language in our policy governance that refers to the staff and faculty and us as board. So I'm just made a suggestion to add into our book. So the first one is, they're pretty simple. This one would refer to general executive constraints on page 10 in regards to the president's duties. The president shall not fail to achieve diversity, equity, and inclusion to help all students succeed. Fail to promote respect and acceptance of diverse individuals and awareness of an educational opportunity for underrepresented populations. So I just picked up that language from ACCT. But my intention, and I'd love to hear you guys' opinions about this, is to echo what President Ruda's already started by making this a campus-wide emphasis and importance and policy. And then the second part of that would be adding similar language to our section on board job description. And then the second part of that would be adding similar language to our section on board job description. How do you, I feel like the language is pretty broad and, and could be interpreted in whichever way that you deem necessary.
In regards to the presidents?
Yeah.
And if he's already doing it, why not have him shine about it? So, I mean, it's not something that we're asking him necessarily to take, it's just.
It's drawing attention to.
And it's letting us know exactly what he's doing, balling up on.
Sure, I mean, in the direction that it's going right now, they're at board agreement, uh, that's their performance agreements are part of it. But definitely accreditation side, diversity, and inclusion are, are aspects we have to speak to as well.
In the board job description, again, I took this language from A C C T, advocate for the values of diversity, multiculturalism, and compassion, respect and welcome all people equally. So that's even much more broad and, and kind of a.
I'd say that could almost be. I mean, it, it's great for the board, but I mean, it's, oh, I mean, it's. No, I, I like it, I.
I think we could also, as a board, entertain education offerings in regards to this subject. And I think Pam has offered that in the past for us, so that might be something in our future. And that would go along with it, so. Any other thoughts?
I like it.
Do, should we accept these, or do you want to think about them for a month and vote on it next month?
The only thing I was looking at is, does it belong more in code of conduct than job description? I mean, I have no problem with the, I just want to make sure we put it in the right place. So that.
The code of conduct is more board to board, is that correct? I mean, I, or governing as a board and that, maybe I'm wrong.
No.
The code of conduct is, is, is more how the board operates as a, as a whole, not necessarily as the board views the campus. How you, how you present yourself as a board member, I guess. I mean, I could see it being there.
I almost think you could make it as an and even, but.
Well, that's what I was kind of getting at. That's where I'm saying it's kind of bigger, like, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it really could evolve into something like that. And honestly, I think it's kind of a buzz, they're kind of buzzwords right now, but I do see that going to evolve more. And I really do think that maybe not at this time, but certainly evolve into an essential skill of letting students, and that's kind of where I said is bigger, you know, yes, it's nice for the board to be on it, but why aren't we pushing this to the kids? And, and as, I mean, as, as presidents doing that, I think it's, I think it's, it's much bigger picture. But I think it has to evolve first.
Yeah, strengthen some office, office and with it.
Yeah.
No, I, I have no problem with it going in the job description. I was just browsing around to see if, if there was any other better fit.
I'd make, I, I'll make a motion that we add the general executive constraints treatment of people on page ten to the president shall, or, and then the addition to the board job description, page nineteen, and see if that comes up for vote. If it doesn't, we can table it, I guess.
Oh, second that.
Motion. All right, so we have a motion and a second to accept the suggested language for policy governance edition. Any other discussion?
Clarify, just real quick on the board job description, then with adding number seven.
Yes. So the correction is that this.
Advocate.
Advocate for the values of diversity sentence becomes number seven on page nineteen. Hey, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Beth, I.
Blake, I.
Shanda, I.
Marilyn, I. Thank you, guys. We'll add that in.
I like the.
All right. Discuss monthly board assessment. What I have for you is a draft of our monthly assessment that we will complete at the end of each meeting. This is something that Pam talked about at our retreat, and it's been mentioned in other board resources. I just put some questions out there. I think we should narrow this down to like three. So if you have ideas, ones that you like, ones that you don't like.
Would it be a revolving?
I mean, I guess you could do that, too. Which of those, I mean, thinking about any of those, which is, what, what's the most important to you?
I think probably four would be a good one.
Yeah, and, and that or adding three and four together, I think in the past, I, I think we always struggle. How are we linking with the public, or how, you know, again, with the ownership linkage or, or some facet or another. I think we all could do a better job of.
Die we link? Little typo there.
So maybe combining three and four a little bit.
Some kind of hybrid of those, or maybe, I don't know.
Okay, I like seven.
Yeah, I agree.
Maybe seven and eight together.
Shoot, seven, eight, and nine can be. I find ten to probably be not as, I feel like most of the time we're, I, I feel like.
We're as prepared as.
We're as prepared as can be, and, and, and I, maybe not something that, maybe it keeps, you know, in a database or something. At, at some point, if we have struggle or something, but i- in my time on the board, I've never felt like somebody's just coming. Just giving nothing, you know, or.
You haven't heard my report. I was trying to run you out of words.
Okay, so I hear you saying combine three and four. David, which one's important to you? Or, or, or I'll, I'll entertain other suggestions.
Did we talk about doing seven, eight, and nine together?
I like number twelve. I also like number one, one. And focusing on students.
Yeah, I really think there needs to be something about the ends. I mean, did we?
So, yes, number one.
If we did twelve, that would be four.
So I have a number one. Guys, I sound like Chinese restaurant. Combining three and four, combining seven, eight, nine, and number twelve.
And, you know, we did talk about the addition of somebody to help with like the Roberts Rule of Orders and stuff. And so that might even need to encompass that position, and were they prepared to interject and, and delegate that? I mean, until we get that role, it's, it's fine as is, but just to make sure if we do that, that we're doing that effectively.
So do you want to clarify what you're saying?
Well, when we were at our retreat, we talked about, gosh, what was even the title that we called? Like a clerk. To help facilitate the logistics and making sure we're on, unlike the Roberts Rules of Order. So maybe it's not just the chairperson. Some of that may, some of those duties may fall to the clerk.
Yeah, I see what you're saying in regards to number twelve.
Yeah, on number twelve, that is that clerk effective in that position? Like I said, not that we're there yet, but as we go forward, if that position is added, we might have to.
I, I, you know, again, kind of one and two go, I, I think, I mean, we're all we're all guilty of it. Sometimes we get into the weeds, or sometimes we look at right now and that means factor. And, and again, focusing on the ends, I think in contrast, you know, did we, did, you know, did we focus on long-term impacts ends? Or did we go into the means, or, or have, or one or the other? Because I, I do feel like it's really easy to get over into the means, just like that, and all of a sudden talking about, well, what about right now? And so I don't know, I mean, I, I, like you said, all of them are really good, and probably all have certainly merit to them, but.
Okay, do you want to just cut it down to like six, six or seven, something like that? I'd like to, I'd like to try it for next month, so that's why I'm kind of pushing you guys to make a decision here.
Well, if you combine those, it'd be four of them.
All right, so I'll work on combining them, and then I can email you, let you know, or you guys can look at it.
Is that?
Do, do we need to? Blake brought up number two.
I like, I like having both there, because I think it could happen, both of them could happen.
Well, yeah, you could, and, and that's why I said, does some of them need to be combined, or, or they stand on their own? I mean, sometimes you put, combine them together, and then it's, it's a kind of, well, yes to this and.
Anybody is absolutely opposed to?
Do you want to take out number ten?
I say number ten. I don't think it's an issue. I, I mean, everybody else. Well, I mean, yeah, I, well, I mean, it would be such a random case, you could probably put it in the comments, other, like an other.
Yeah, there's.
But I don't think ten is really necessary.
Then I suggest we leave the rest of them, and I can tweak it and combine it and bring it back to, I'll send you an email. But the intention is to do this at the end of each meeting and review the results together. Not spending a bunch of time on it, that true. Okay. All right, um, let's see, did that one? All right, the president's evaluation is one other thing that I wanted to show you. I mentioned this at the last meeting. This is a timeline for the president's evaluation. And then also I included the board's self-assessment timeline that we're just starting to work on. Okeydoke. So it is coming up quickly that you'll be sent an electronic form of the president's evaluation. This is the form that we worked on previously. And so from March fifteenth to March thirty-first, you will answer the questions, and this is an electronic answer, and resubmitted. H R will, will collect the data and compile it for us so that we can review the results at the next meeting.
Marilyn, are these coming to our G C C account?
Well, no, so when they, when they are coming to H R, then she will manually print the results.
No, I'm just saying they just initial.
Send out to G C C account?
Probably, yes.
To anybody, that would be time that they don't.
Is everybody, I've got mine forwarded to my others, so unless they're. Unless that's glitched.
All right, anybody else?
I do appreciate this. This makes a lot more sense than what you did last.
All right, if anybody has any issues with the email, please talk to Jody. Okay, the board self-assessment, I'm just starting to work with Colleen Allen to put together a tool, but I would really like some help with this one because there's some decisions to make, and I, I don't want to make all the decisions on, and basically this is on what to be included in the assessment tool. Is there anybody that would like to help me out with that? I have another job for you.
I thought I just got off the hook.
Thank you. So we can work on that. The last thing that I have to talk about is the code of conduct policy that you mentioned. And so I appreciate you forecasting it. So we do have a policy that's called code of conduct, but we talked about enhancing it by adding the clerk's duties in there to reflect Roberts rules. Also, an idea was brought up to me that in some other boards, the code of conduct is a, is a policy that has a signature line that each of us sign, that we are going to hold ourselves to
Kind of contract, yeah, yeah.
That way it's more professional.
Okay.
Never seen law enforcement, but we have designed one.
Okay. And you just do it once a year, or? At what?
At the beginning of our career.
We talked, we talked a little bit about, just Marilyn and Ryan and myself. We talked a little bit about maybe we could combine it with that form that we sign every year, that we have no conflicts. And that that could be a second part of it.
I think it's sensible. It, refresher, kind of of. Is that in conjunction, usually, then we're talking with the attorney usually coming in, would that, is that the same time? Is that, no, okay.
That's part of the audit process that they want the, if there's any conflicts of interest, I mean, you said.
That comes up in the discussion.
Right.
Okay, so you're okay with working on that?
Okay.
And I will help you.
Yeah, I just, yeah, shoot me an email of kind of more details of what you want to see down on it.
All right, and then, so we'll bring that back to the next meeting. And I would, that's enough of this stuff, okay, guys? All right, that concludes item number three. Number four. Sure, sure, that's. Yeah. Melissa, we're gonna, we're gonna sidestep you a minute. SGA is coming up.
She's muted. Did she hear you?
Yeah, I think so.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, there she is.
Okay, hello, everybody. So for some events, we had our meeting today with other groups. And Meet Judging shared that they placed fourth in the last showing. And then they will be helping with the event with FF, I'm sorry, FAA and 4H. And then the block in Bridle has an endowment auction and they are going to do campus closet donations. And then PTK, PTK is doing a time capsule. So like all the groups and stuff around campus will be able to put stuff in. And SGA has taken a picture and is gonna put some stuff in there as well. And then the art group is doing a plant giveaway next month. So some of the art classes made pots and then they're gonna give them away to the students. And then something that we talked about today is spring break. Spring break is next week. And a lot of the students are staying here because of sports. So we decided to do something for them. And so for each day, we're gonna have different, different events. And we were gonna do it like as a competition, but because of all the game schedules and practices, we just decided to make it like a come and go type of thing. So every day at 11 will be a different event. So Monday, there will be a lip sync battle. Tuesday will be a free throw competition. Wednesday will be a relay. Thursday will be four square competition. And then Fridays, we're gonna have water balloons, popsicles, yard games and prizes. And then throughout each day, we'll have giveaways. And then this will all be in the parking lot of the dorms, so it'll be outside. And then the following week after spring break is homecoming week. And we'll have different events throughout each day. So Monday, the 22nd will be mix match day, yard games in the quad and window painting. And then Tuesday will be decades day and the game Silent Library will be taking place in the library. And then Wednesday, the 24th is Hawaiian Day and there'll be mocktails. And then we are gonna do cardboard fan creation. So students can come and make their own cardboard like they have in the NFL and stuff. So that yes, there's limited, but it's still something that they can feel a part of the game. So they can come create their own cardboard cutout. And then we will place those in the stands. And then Thursday is pajama day. And then the calf will make waffles for lunch. And then there'll be trivia games. And then Thursday, they will also be able to make their cardboard fan creations. And then Friday is school spirit day. And then we'll have a hunt for the G rock, which is a scavenger hunt, and then campus cleanup. So we will clean up the campus. And then Saturday is game day. And that is all that I have to update you guys with. Do you have any questions?
You guys are gonna be busy. It sounds like a lot of fun.
Yes, I'm excited. We're all excited. So thank you guys for letting me share.
Thanks for your patience tonight.
Have a great night.
Thanks, you too. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and turn over to Melissa and Carol from Garden City. How are you guys?
Very good. Excited to be here. Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, here we go. Okay, for those of you who do not know me, my name is Carol Davidson. I am the Director of the Neighborhood and Development Services Department for the city. And it is that time again for our HID renewals. That's the Rural Housing Incentive District program that we have. It's time for annual renewal. And we've just been going around to all the taxing jurisdictions and just kind of giving them a housing update. Let you know where we're at and how our RIDs are working here in Garden City. We'd like to, just ahead of time, thank you for allowing us to come and present this information to you. We appreciate all of the support that you have given the city. And Melissa is actually going to give the presentation, so I will turn it over to her.
All righty, thank you, Carol. My name is Melissa Dordy O'Hara and I am one of the planners with the Neighborhood and Development Services Department. And one of the fun things that I get to do among a lot of other things is do the Rural Housing Incentive District Program and work with developers on that. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here. And I will now go through some updates we have for the upcoming year. Sorry, mind getting my other. Okay, here we go. So one way that we know that we need the Rural Housing Incentive Program here in Garden City is by doing a community housing assessment team study. This is something that we refer to with acronyms and we call it the chat report. This is a bi-annual report that we do in conjunction with Finney County Economic Development. And it's done for Finney County, Garden City and the city of Holcomb. Over since 2012, when we began this study, Garden City has been the only city to qualify, according to the state statutes, to be allowed to use the Rural Housing Incentive District Program. And the way that the chat does that is it looks like at overall existing housing, the population trends that we predict to occur within our community, economic development trends. And then it assesses how much housing we potentially need over the next 10, 20 years. So when we're looking at an outlook over the next, by 2030, we will have needed to meet our housing demand needs, 1,200 units of housing. One of the things that the Housing City also provides is economic breakdowns of the types of housing that we need within our community. And it also gives you numbers to assess that, where we're meeting those market demands. When we break it down over the next 10 years, on average, we need to add about 120 units of housing per year. You see lots of housing development going on here in Garden City, so it seems like a very achievable goal. However, on average, in 2020, only 75 homes were built in Garden City and 61 of those homes were built in developments using the RID tool, which is a good sign. These are lots that are developed already with infrastructure ready for houses to be built. Nearly 81% of our homes built here in Garden City are built in Rural Housing Incentive District programs. When we went back to that cost comparison, they predicted over the next 10 years that we should only need 22 owner occupied housing units per year. Should be over $200,000 or evaluated at that. An interesting statistic that I always find for this area, in 2020, when we talk about the average valuation of new single-family home constructions. So when people are coming out and filling, filling out their building permits, they're giving us the valuation of the land and costs for construction of that home, including labor. The average valuation of a new single-family home was $212,000. Just four years ago, that number was only $187,000. So the cost of construction for new single-family homes is only rising. This chart here shows you the number of housing use completed in Garden City from 2010 to 2012. And the blue covers the multifamily units, including duplexes and apartments. And then the single family is only for single-family detached home structures. So you can see, since we had a little dip in 2016, we've been continuing to rise. 25, year 2015 was a good year. That's when we had a lot of productive development going on, including the completion of a lot of duplex units as well as in 2013, we had a peak year for the completion of a lot of the apartments up by the reserves on North Campus Drive. So this chart here is a little different in showing that there's two ways to figure out how we're doing in housing. One is completed, so took of its occupancy. So how many houses are actually completed and built in a year? And then the number of housing permits that we issue. So when you think of the last 20 years, in 2000 through 2010, we were actually on a downswing for housing development here in Garden City. Around 2011 and 2012 is when we did our first community housing assessment team study and started approving our RIDs to be used within the city limits. And you can see from 2013 on, we've only had an upswing of trends in lots available to build for housing. So we've seen an increase in permits. This chart here goes over the Rural Housing Incentive Districts that we have approved here in Garden City with your help. Currently, we have 21 approved Rural Housing Units or Rural Housing Incentive Districts. And seven of those approved districts have completed building all the predicted housing that they intended to build. Over the next two years, we expect to see an additional six RIDs complete, completing their build out, predicted build out numbers and filling up their development. This map here shows the geographic locations of RIDs located throughout the community. The gold color on your screen is shows the where those completed RIDs are located in the city. The blue have RID development agreements and are currently building housing. The pink areas are areas that have been approved by the state and are ready to move forward with the city's process of local approval for their development agreements and getting their developments started. And then in 2019, we had a lot of requests to add some new areas and get state approval. And those are the areas that you see highlighted in the tealy color. And actually, we approved two areas in 2019, the Milestone Homes Edition and Sunflower Crossing. And within the last year, they both have gone through the process and been locally approved to use the RID program to build housing. So that's really exciting. I'll now go over a few of the development agreement or anticipated housing developments. We are working with developers that they are going to be ready to get their RIDs approved. So you will be getting notifications that these developments will be requesting the use of the RID program. The first, and these are not in chronological order necessarily, when they will be approved, but I'll go through them. So Sunset Terrace Estates Phase 1, they, we anticipate 55 units. North Borough Second Edition Phase 2, that's on the northwest side of town, and we anticipate 26 units of housing. Chapel Heights 4, that'll be 49 units. Lost River Phase 1, 37. Hawkeye Development is 11 units. And then Fessin Valley Third Edition is not using the RID program, but we do include that in predictive, the anticipating housing units. So over the next year and the future developments, we anticipate 196 units of housing being built within Garden City. I'll now go over each individual RID to show you where these are located and give you a little more information about the developments. Sunset Terrace Estates is located on Highway 50 and South Towns Road, just south of Sunset Memorial Gardens. This development will be done in two phases. And the first phase will be Phase 1A. And they anticipate that that will be 55 units and those will all be single-family detached homes. Phase 2 will include an additional 54 units of single-family detached homes as well. North Borough Second Edition Phases 1 and 2, this development is on North Third Street, just north of the cemetery. They have already done one phase of development and that was called the North Borough Replata First Edition. And that included 20 duplex units. Those have just been completed last year and are ready to get occupied. The North Borough Edition Phases 1 and 2 will include 55 units. This will also be a continuation of the duplexes and have some single-family detached homes throughout the development as well. Chapel Heights Fourth Edition, this is one of our most popular areas of town and is one of the more quicker RIDs that has been filling out and has lots of development. Chapel Heights, of course, is over off of Mary Street and Jenny Barker Road. The Fourth Edition is going to be in the southwest corner of the development and will include 49 lots that will all be single-family development homes. The area there, that's outlined in blue, that will be Chapel Heights 4. We just had an amendment to their preliminary plat, which was exciting. So they are thinking of future phases down the road. And we anticipate with future phases that they will add an additional 187 single-family detached homes there to finish out that residential development. Lost River Edition, that is located on the North Campus, 3100 block. It's just south of Prairie View Acres there on the north and the reserves at Prairie Ridge or to the east there. And Pioneer Trail runs along the south there. And the Lost River Edition will be done in potentially five different phases of development. And the first phase that they intend to do is the south portion there of Phase 1 and will include 37 and single-family lots. This is gonna be one of our most creative residential developments that they're anticipating. Single-family detached homes, multifamily housing options, including cottages and apartments and duplexes. And then on North Third Street, they anticipate to have a commercial component as well. And that area highlighted there in the purplish shade, that'll be the first phase of development that will come through for RID approval here this year with the 37 lots. Hawkeye Development is an infill development. It's located on Emerson Avenue and 9th Street. This is one of the, I find, one of the exciting ways to use the RID program is that we have existing infill areas within the city that are great potential for residential housing. However, because no street or infrastructure is installed, it sits vacant and is sometimes hard to develop these smaller lots and isn't as cost efficient for some of our larger developers. The developer will be working to recreate a total of 11 lots out of this area. And they'll be installing a street from Emerson Avenue to Thompson Street. And all of these homes at this point will be single-family detached homes. As we look out across the landscape of what type of housing that we will be anticipating with the future developments, we anticipate a majority of the housing, of course, will be single-family homes. It's one of the sought, sought-after housing types here. However, duplexes are quite popular. And then we'll have components of multifamily units. So over the developments that I just reviewed, we have approximately 965 units anticipated. If we divide that out over the next 10 years, we anticipate they will provide 96 units of housing. And remember, our housing need is 120 per year. So we, we have a lot of great housing opportunities planned. It's just a matter of us getting it built and the infrastructure installed. Along with the anticipated housing that we have from the upcoming RIDs, we still do have developments that are building, finishing building out their developments. And that includes Prairie View Acres, which we anticipate for them to have a total build out number of approximately 252. number of approximately 252 units. And they already have the single family, the duplexes, and the multifamily. Milestone Edition, that was just one of the more recently ones approved. That's located on North Third Street and Stone Street. And they will be doing eight homes there, single family detached. Sunflower Crossing, again, was one of the RHIDs we just approved, and they will be providing 62 single family units. They also have a planned urban development where they'll have some smaller lots north of the development, which is along Spruce Street. So the price points on those homes potentially will be a little more affordable and will provide a great opportunity for some starter homes. Columbus Edition is primarily, it's located on the west side of town and will be all duplex rentals. And then Hampton's One and Two is located north of Tractor Farm Supply, and we anticipate that development to have 283 total units. A majority of that housing will be single family, and then they do have a component in Hampton's too that will have some duplex housing units. So the potential from existing RHIDs planned, we have over 1,792 units over the next 10 years. That averages out to about 179 units. So we, we have the opportunities here to be meeting our needs over the next 10 years for sure. Another thing that the chat report does talk about is that relationship between and the split between the owner occupied and rental. The chat report provides a 50/50 mix. And right now, we predict with the housing types that will be coming online that we have about 64 of those units will be meeting the owner occupied demand, and then 35% of those will be meeting the rental units demand. That concludes my update of the rural housing incentive districts. And now I do have time to take a few questions if anybody has any.
It seems like most of those were single family new builds, and you talked about the cost of that being around $212. And that was way above the median of affordability. How is that bottom half of those affordabilities being addressed?
Many times within our community, that will be addressed through single individual vacant lots, that the price point for those, the land and the installation of that home could be lower to be below 200,000 as well as converting vacant homes into and remodeling existing homes. Part of this equation is that we have such a low stock of housing inventory that it really messes with, in a good way, for sellers, the selling price of the home. I know at one point last year, towards the end of year, we only had 33 available single family homes to purchase. So one of the things that is great about the RHID program is that if we can increase the inventory of housing, then that potentially could help level out the market to bring some of the costs of homes down.
Deflate the property values somewhat.
It, it can affect the property values, yes. Property values are appraised on housing type to housing type. So with some of these newer housing types coming online, we have one development that is Sunflower, pardon me, Pheasant Valley Third Edition, which will be doing single family attached. So that property, getting those online potentially could drive down the market pricing value just a little and give some price point breaks to families that are coming in at that more low to moderate affordable income.
And this is Carol. Really, in all honesty, most people that, that can only afford a home under 200,000, the chances of them getting a brand new home are very slim. Our, our market, our resale market with existing homes, that's, that's probably and most typically will be where the people looking for starter homes will get their homes from people that have existing homes that are smaller, a lower price, and they're looking to upgrade. So they'll get a nicer home, and then somebody else looking for a starter home would, would be able to purchase their home.
Melissa or Carol, in, in the RHID, are there SIDs that the property owners have to pay?
No, are you talking like specials?
Yeah.
No, the RHID, the way the RHID is set up is the developer covers all of the cost to put in infrastructure. And then through over 15-year period from the date the project begins, the developer will be getting reimbursed through property tax rebates that money that they, they spent on the infrastructure. So it's, it's actually a win-win for the, for the homeowners because they will be able to, you know, purchase a home and then not have to worry about paying that extra property tax for specials.
So is there anything you need from us?
Not at this time. We just wanted to let you know what, what's going on. And we do have some RHIDs coming up this year and just kind of let, to make you aware of them. And we're just hoping for your, for your support when these come through. You will get, when they go through, you will get that, that ordinance that you will have the opportunity to, to make a petition or a resolution to make a petition to not be in favor of the RHID, which would make it null and void. So the, the, these RHID tool is really dependent upon you guys as a taxing jurisdiction as well as all the other taxing jurisdictions we have.
All right. Any other questions for these great ladies? All right. We thank you for staying up with us. Appreciate it.
All righty. Thank you.
For the time. Thank you.
We don't have to vote on anything. Okay. President's report?
Just a couple of items. Was honored this, this last month, we'll have Governor Kelly on campus. She came toured both her beach lab and investor maintenance facility. Signed a proclamation while on campus, playing February as career tech Ed Month. So very happy to host her. Kind of along those same lines, happy to announce that we will be expanding a lot of what we're going to be doing as far as Excel and CTE programming this next year. We're going to be providing automotive tech courses starting in the fall, tuition free to Garden City, Deerfield and Holcomb, teaching over at the old JD Adams, the old high school, so they have a shop over there that we're going to be using for automotive. Just a couple of last updates. Quiz Bowl team competed in the National Quiz Bowl Championship last weekend virtually. Supposed to be in Florida, so the coaches decorated the room with a lot of Florida before. The true feel of it there, but the team ended up finishing 13th nationally. One of our students, Keely Babcock, scored in the top 10 of individuals and finished eighth overall nationally. So congratulations to the team and coaches. Then just yesterday, we did open up the applications for the Higher Education Relief Act, Round Two Funding for Students. So we had 500,000 that made available for students through an online application to help address financial need.
When I was over getting colored paper, Matt told me that he's tracking the applications, and in two days, we had over, day and a half, had over 400.
Kind of along those lines, this last point, I was on a webinar there today, and there is around three stimulus funding that the Senate has approved. The House is taking action on tomorrow, so we're still trying to work through Round Two. We will have the possibilities of Round Three coming here the next week there as well, which potentially will bring roughly about $4 million here to college.
Take it. We have incidental information in the packet that you can look at. Report from Fannie County Economic Development.
Well, the last month, Matt was leader from the city, county, school district. College providing a date on projects that they're working on. Given up, so the entities could have a better understanding of the impact on the community resource. Any or all these projects decided on. Some of these projects over the years that they've been working, nothing to give them. We also have a retreat on the 24th, and one of the influential individuals have made a big decision for Imperial, those time Garden City speak. He stated one of the major factors that helped them make up their mind to pick our location was the cooperation between the city, county, and education partners.
Great. Great. Report from KACT.
You all, we didn't know for sure how we were going to do this, or I didn't, because it was a long meeting. I ask that you all got a the agenda? Did you all get that? Okay, so, so what I'm telling you is we met Saturday through Zoom, on Zoom. And it, two hours in a dark basement, the reason I was in the basement is because that's the day my housekeeper comes. Anyway, I was going to mention a few things to you, but Ryan did send the email to you all that you could download the packet. And there are things on that packet that I think you'd really like to see. I'm going to just pass this around for the heck of it, because it, it shows the community colleges and the expenditures. They did, I don't know, just, just look at a few of them. The Fight Theta, another thing that I sent you to your home addresses. Okay, you got everything. Okay. The other thing, because when we did the Fight Theta Kappa, the, the students' pictures were not there, and they were supposed to be. So one of the things I sent to you, to your home email address, because it's, I figured I wouldn't get in so much trouble grouping six of you together. Except Marilyn, she had to get hers from the college because hers was full. But anyway, it did show the pictures and the guy talking. It was, it's a much better presentation than we were able to see. Another thing that I sent to you was the Kansas Post Secondary Tech Education Authority. They do not govern community colleges. They're in a state, you know this. They're not key community colleges, tech schools. Tech colleges do not have taxing authorities, and the board members are appointed. Approved funding for the tech programs, also tuition fees. And then the goals they have, there are three committees, budget and finance, advocacy and marketing, technical program and curriculum. The reason I mentioned this to you is because there are so many legislators that don't have a clue that community colleges are not born part of the border region. They're not border regions institutions. Neither are the tech schools. They don't understand that we have our own, and helping look, Ryan, if I go wrong here. We, we set our own funding, you know, we're, we have our own taxing entity. And of course, the tech schools don't have it. One note that I wanted to point out to you was that KSU and KSU Salina proposed to award associate degree programs. And you can imagine Cloud Butler vigorously opposed this. And so KSU withdrew their proposal. And the National ACT report on federal legislation priorities is in that packet, if you would like to download that. But I did, yeah, you should have the handout for their priorities. They want to fund the community colleges and students to meet the pandemic challenges. They want to support the Dreamers. You can look at it, I just wanted to mention to you that I think there are some good things here. They want to support the Pell Grants for students in short-term workforce courses. You know, before, Pell Grant had to be at least half, and this, this allows them for short-term and workforce programs, and they want to increase that Pell maximum. Still standing on this in Washington, but National Legislative Summit, they had their first all-viral virtual convention in February to 10th. You do have that if you want to pull it down. Okay. Kbor has lots of strings for one-time use. And they're also pushing for diversity, equity, and inclusion, particularly the underserved. There is a performance agreement. If you go into, if you're going to participate, you, you do qualify for some money, but if you don't participate, you're not going to gain that money. In the packet, resource updates for the federal COVID. And we talked about Spark Two, Spark Three, CARES Two, they've extended the deadlines. They're waiting for guidelines. More than CARES One can be used since December. Is that right?
CARES One is prior to the seventh one.
Yeah, but CARES Two? Yeah. And CARES Three should be expected. The Biden plan, they think, is going to be 2.1 billion for the state. More money from CARES than, than in the entire state funding. Says abundance of money can cause problems. The Kansas Framework for Growth, I won't spend a whole lot of time, but there is a full packet in there. I mean, it's part of the packet. There's no new money. The biggest thing, Kansas wants to keep our students in state. And in some programs like, like engineering and things, if, if, but that's what, what make, that's tough to do. But what makes us kind of neat is on this, the Promise Act and some things like that will keep our kids here. One of the things, and this, I'm almost through, guys. Heather is the director, and I tell you what, she, in that packet, if you get it, she has put forth so many statistics on community colleges and Garden City Community Colleges, right up there at the top, with most of her statistics. And she used, put them in charts and about the community, Kansas Community Colleges, and she used them in their presentations before all these legislative committees. The governor has, as a letter in this Kansas Framework for Growth, Heather wrote the governor a really good letter and got her support on several things. And I mean, she, as she went into these presentations, the community colleges were definitely on offense, because I, there was so much information in there that you wouldn't even dream about. The Promise Act, one of, one of the things that I did not realize on the Promise Act, that, that's the one, the students, it's the last money, and I didn't understand that at first. That means that when the students come to school and get the Promise Act in our technical programs, that they will stay and work in, in the state for two years. And then if they go on to a four-year school right after they leave us, they put that on hold after they get their, their bachelor, or then they come back and do the two years. And, but, but the thing I didn't realize is that when it talks about the last money, students apply for scholarships, they apply for Pell and everything else. They only use this Promise Money Act money at the, at the very last. There's one other thing I want to talk to you about. Oh, the Senate Bill 63. That will mean that all Kansas students can That will mean that all Kansas students can take the A C T test for free. When I was on the A C T board, there were lots and lots of states that were starting to pay for this. So Kansas is finally getting on, on the board. There is a concern.
Colleges don't really require A C T testing, right?
Depends on where you go.
I mean, they'll really wire, I mean, a lot of your scholarships.
There's, there's a concern, it's called the Peaslee Center in Lawrence, have you heard of this? It's a standalone technical college for Douglas County, now help me out if I do something screwy here. The Senate Bill does not establish tax authority, but it would allow it. And a community college, I mean, they have no accreditation by the Board of Regions. There's no bill at this point for acquisitions and mergers. There's not supposed to be more tech colleges and no more funding unless it's gone through the legislature, so community colleges are a little scared of this piece like that. And one of the things, as again, that I mentioned is our legislators don't have a clue, I mean, some of them do. But they, they just think that they're getting all this state money. And, and you all know that the committee college of budgets are about thirty-six percent local, eighteen percent state, seventeen percent tuition fees. I think the only other thing I want to mention to you, because you, you can get all the rest is the packet, Ron Reichman Senior. You know, Junior is up in Kansas City area somewhere up there. Well, Ron Way Reichman Senior has replaced Senator Bud Estes. And they said that, that Senior is a little more, not quite as conservative as his son, but almost. Derek Schmidt has a pact. And one of the Dodge City Trustees, Dodge City Community College Trustees is big time in this. Something called K E M A, K E M A, community colleges are trustees are now amended in with the U S Boards, U S D Boards to select how funds are spent. And we need statute authority, but I'm sorry, it was so long. Here's the rest. He died, he, yeah, he had been sick. This is one thing, I, I don't know if it was in or the paper or not, but he, all the time he was running, he was ill. And seriously ill, they actually came out to Dodge City and swore him in. And then, I don't know, did he, I don't know what it was, but he, he did die, not, not too long ago, what, a couple months? Yeah. Oh, you did, yeah. Okay, anything else you need to know that I don't know? Thanks, guys, for putting up with it.
Thank you. Report from Faculty Senate.
Hi, everybody, how are you guys?
Great.
Awesome, me too, powering true, we can do this. So I wanted to just kind of talk about what Faculty Senate has been working on. Two big things, we've been working on lately, the big one is approving a couple of professional development request funds. We've had several come in and we've been able to approve all of them because they are very low monetary wise since most conferences are being held online, so we don't have to worry about travel expenses or hotel expenses, so all of them that have come through are pretty low and so we've been, we've been able to approve them all. We were kind of getting a little worried because we didn't have a single request in the fall. But that totally makes sense, since in the fall, most faculty were trying to figure out what the new normal was and so they were not really thinking about going to conferences. And also there was not a lot of conferences being held because again, the conferences were not something that people were thinking about, but we are glad to see that we're kind of getting back to that and we are getting some professional development requests and we have a chance to approve many, so we're hoping that more will come in in a couple of months. So that's, I think, one of the big ones, and then our second big one that we're working on is working on the outstanding awards nominations. Nomination started last week and we are looking for nominations for Faculty of the Year, Rookie Faculty of the Year and Staff Member of the Year, the nominations will stay open this week and hopefully we can start our second round, first we ask for nominations and then on the second round, based on the top nominees, we ask for some more evidence and then a Faculty Senate can vote on those nominees based on that evidence that we gathered from the second round of nominations, so we're hoping to get that done right after spring break, really, hopefully. And then another thing that we might see this Friday in our Faculty Senate meeting, one of our faculties brought up the fact that the current nomination process may be a little bit biased. And so she brought some ideas on how to improve it for the future and so as part of our continuous improvement, we might talk about that this Friday and try to see if we can come up with a more unbiased process for the future. But yeah, that's really all that we are working on so far, other than trying to survive and get through this week, so we can get to spring break. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for waiting, Perla, appreciate the attention.
Oh, no, thank you, guys, thank you for the work that you do, you guys do great and there's a lot that you have to look at, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thanks. Mark, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I'm going to lead in and then Mark's been just eagerly waiting here. Just real quick there, leading into Mark's conversation on accreditation, so in front of you, we've put together called the Bible, whatever we want to there, the H L C accreditation handbook. And a lot of this, and, and you guys have this at your disposal to use as you wish, but the premise of this, we talked a little bit about this last month, that we will have leading into November of twenty-two, we will have regular updates to the board. Each month we will have evidence and documentation that we will put into this handbook. You can take this handbook home with you, if you want to be able to read it or review it. You can keep it here in the office. You do take it home with you, we ask you bring it back in March, we can add in the new documents and the new the new handouts in there, just as placeholders there for you to refer back to, but this is something, hopefully, we, we've added several other documents in here, just for you to review, everything from the letter and the notice of when when the visit will be, Ken Fisher afforded some documentation that she uses, which is training, accreditation rules for boards. So there's a lot of, a lot of things on that end, and on the last piece, I'll just kind of have is at the very back, we have the resources section. So this will be where we will document everything from board training, this will be what we where we document steps, procedure, protocol for onboarding. But then also included the summer report from the Institutional Action Council following the last visits, as well as substantive channels. A lot of this, and it's, it's just things to be sold in and I'm happy to, to visit further individually as a group. But the other piece there is Mark and I had talked about there is, last month, there was question, these conversations about how the board can be engaged or what it is the board can do in order to be involved in the accreditation process, prepare for the accreditation process, so that's part of what we talked through in March, wanted to just present there, slide on some steps and things as far as board's role in accreditation process. Mark?
Hi, everybody, we've really, I promise you saved the best for last. I appreciate the chuckle. Are you all able to see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, so again, just a monthly accreditation update, I promise to be conscious of your time, no more than five minutes. And I'm happy to answer questions. So as Dr. Ruda had mentioned, last month, we, we sort of talked about the three major components of the reaffirmation of accreditation visit. The board raised the question of clarifying its role and understanding how the board can be involved in the accreditation process, so I'm coming to you this evening, really in my role as accreditation liaison officer to give my perspective and kind of a recommendation about how you can think about your involvement with accreditation. So we're just gonna talk a little bit more about, you know, sort of the institution's role and then also the, the Board of Trustees' role. So looking at these three components, the assurance argument is where the institution will provide written evidence that it is meeting the criteria for accreditation. And that really is the role for the institution. We'll give some specific examples of what that looks like on the next slide. The student survey, opinion survey will, will happen almost on its own without really much involvement even from the institution. But the board does have a very real and very important role in the site visit in November of twenty-twenty-two. And that role is in supporting the institution in the run up to that visit, so we'll talk more about that specifically. So I wanted to, to break down some of these, give you some examples of, of what I'm thinking about. If we look at, for, for the assurance argument, the college is really required to provide evidence that the institution is, is meeting expectations, it's a forty thousand word document, there tons of links to documents and meeting minutes, reports, those sorts of things inside of it. And the binders that Dr. Ruda discussed this evening, you all have copies of the complete criteria for accreditation. The board, as a, as an entity, is discussed specifically in Criterion Two, a little bit in Criterion Five. So let's look at just a couple of examples and think about what the institution will do and then the, the role that board, the board plays in support. If we look at component two A one, that one reads that the institution develops and the governing board adopts the mission. So what we will do inside the assurance argument is that we will provide evidence going back in history that the mission of the college was developed collaboratively. It was approved by the Board of Trustees and it's reviewed continually. So in your role as a board, your role is really to continue to regularly review that mission statement, which you do as a part of, of your own processes every August. If we look at two A two as another example, the institution operates with integrity in its financial, academic, human resources and auxiliary functions. So again, the institution will provide evidence about integrity and operations. And that evidence is probably going to include reports to the Board of Trustees regarding executive limitations. Things like regarding the treatment of people, budgeting, forecasting, asset protection, those types of things, we will be looking for the reports we've made to you and your approval of those reports as a way of, of helping to show that we operate with integrity in these areas. Your role is to continue demanding those reports. Okay. Moving on to another example here, two C one. The governing board is trained and knowledgeable so that it makes informed decisions with respect to the institution's financial and academic policies and practices. The board meets its legal and fiduciary responsibilities. So again, we will provide evidence that, that the board is trained and knowledgeable. What you can do to support this and now and in the future is continue to insist on more training for yourselves in your role as elected officials in governing the institution. And this one is, this one's fairly, fairly blood. Two C five, the governing board delegates day to day management of the institution to the institution's administration and expects the institution's faculty to oversee academic matters. So again, the institution, inside that assurance argument, will turn to your own work with the Carver model, setting the ends, leaving the means to, to Dr. Ruda's delegation. We will turn to that type of policy governance that you have established in order to help show and, and demonstrate to our site reviewers that we are following this, we are meeting this standard. So I think the, the larger point here is, is just that your role, your primary, your foremost and a very important role in the accreditation process is to just keep living the expectations. And I think I've given some examples tonight of where your existing processes are already essential in proving to H L C that we are meeting these criteria. So when we hit the site visit in November of twenty-twenty-two, the site visit team, if we're post-COVID and we're actually sending teams out at that point, the site team will have a session with the trustees and some of you were familiar with this from a previous visit. But they will have a session with the trustees and in that session, they will be poking and prodding you for information and what they're really trying to discern is does, is, does Garden City Community College have a board that clearly understands its roles in, as a governing body for the institution? So our goal is, with, with the monthly updates, with the training materials inside of that binder, is, and, and as those accumulate month by month by month, we, we hope to help prepare you for that session in November of twenty-two. And I hope that this answers a, a question from last month and helps reiterate the importance of the things that you are already doing. That there, there are things that you're already doing that really no one else inside the institution can do in providing that oversight. So, so that's the end of my chat tonight, but I'm happy to answer questions or address concerns that you may have.
I think the, the final, the piece there too, just kind of following up with what Mark said, it's in the March, in the March tab in your handouts. There is a copy that is placed of the criteria for accreditation, we've also gone through the highlights specifically. Criterion Two and Criterion Five were referenced, people who govern the bodies, they you know, going through and reading criteria one through five is definitely relevant to understand what, what all the criteria are. But we wanted to go through the highlights specifically, where governing board and, and board's responsibilities are highlighted.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, Mark.
Any other questions or comments? So I would encourage everybody to read this frequently and, and feel like you can if you have questions, you have this opportunities to ask and if you want to practice some things, I think we're planning to do that in the future, that we'll practice some questions that
Yeah, I think.
A team might ask us.
Yeah, because it is a little overwhelming, I would say, when you've got a panel of not, well, it will be a panel of like nine or it was, it was kind of intense last time.
Four.
Yeah, four, yeah, it was four, that's right. Normal site visit would be four, last time it was like nine or ten. But it can be, it can be rather intimidating at times, so but yeah, with, with practice and ease and having a better understanding and
Making it hard for me to want to change my flight from Rome to come back in time. Just take the age around a little bit.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Okay. Let's see, item seven, ownership link beach. Any, anybody have anything they'd like to share? We don't have any executives that, okay. So there are several dates listed there for some athletic events, if you get a chance, try to attend them.
No, we'll, we'll just have the women's, men's, men are not, so just
Is there tailgate or anything going on with the football or is that all?
We're still signing on that, conferences around sessions and gives us a little bit of flexibility.
Jody sent us an email earlier about the legislative coffee. My bad, if you'd like to attend, you need to let her know. Because there's limited seating because of COVID restrictions.
Jody, I think I got enrolled through the chamber, but if I didn't. Jody, I think I got an roll through the chamber, but if I didn't.
I can check with Micah.
Okay, thanks.
Great.
I think I got a roll.
Alright, guys, I am done. Let's call this meeting adjourned. Thank you for your adjournance.